It is six o'clock and we're calling this, uh, we're not calling this meeting to order because we are short a council member and we're just trying to get in contact with him. Thank you all for your patience. It is 6:01 and we're calling the meeting to order. Mayor Protem, would you please read the Governor's Standards and Expectations, Section 180-1D? The Rules of Decorum. Persons attending city council meetings should observe the same rules of priority, doctrine, and good conduct as they would show in a courtroom, a place of worship, or any other series of solemn occasion during which matters of importance are being considered. Visitors will refrain from engaging in chatter, private conversations, and from making other distracting noises while the city council is in session. Phones and other electronic devices should be set to off or in a silent mode. Visitors should not applaud, boo, clap, or otherwise odly express approval or disapproval of the speech of another person in a manner likely to disturb this meeting. Addressing city council, persons wishing to address the city council or any matter listed on the agenda may be recognized by the chair, provided the person has completed a citizen speaker registration form and presented to the city secretary prior to the beginning of the council. Speakers should approach the lectern and give his or her name and city of residence before speaking. Speakers shall address the mayor and city council with civil, with civility that is conducted to appropriate public discussion. All public comments should be addressed through the chair. Each speaker will be allowed four minutes to speak. A majority vote of the city council is required for any time extensions. No person shall be allowed to address the city council more than one time per agenda item. Address the chair. Persons may not engage in discussion with the city council or staff during council deliberations unless specifically asked a question by a city council member. Persons who have been asked a question by a city council member must be recognized by the chair before being allowed to speak. The chair may end any question and answer session between council members and a member of the public in order to facilitate the order of business. Printed materials. Persons must present printed material to the city secretary to distribute to the city council. You are not to distribute to the city council during a meeting. No disruptions. Persons attending city council meetings should remain seated or may stand in the back of the room and come and go so long as it does not disrupt the meeting. Persons in attendance should not carry signs or place cards. No person attending any city council meeting shall delay the proceedings or refuse to obey the orders of the chair. Removal. Disturbances, transgressions of the rules, or disorderly conduct in the city council chamber or our city council meeting room may cause the transgressor to be removed from the meeting. The chair of the meeting should exercise control over persons who disrupt the meeting in the following order of action. Call the person to order advising that person of the infraction. Advise the person that the infraction must cease immediately, or the person will be ordered to leave the meeting. Order the person to leave the meeting. A police officer may remove an individual or individuals for disrupting a meeting as authorized by Texas Penal Code, Section 42.05. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Residents, you have four minutes to speak. Council, if you would like to answer a question, you have one minute. Madam Secretary, we will start out with the citizen petition.
CP 23013 Shirley Del Conte, new assistant city manager.
Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Good evening.
Madam Secretary, to the timer, please.
It's on.
Oh, I can't see it.
Um, yes, if this position is filled for a new assistant city manager.
Thank you.
This person should meet all requirements for the position. Must have at least five years' experience in various municipal operations. That particular office level. Be fully vetted, and if any indiscretion is found, the city council should not consider this person for employment. This person should be open to persons under their charge with concerns or complaints, and transparent in all areas concerning their actions. Also, working with the various committees to get valuable input from committee members. The right person for this position would also alleviate persons presenting themselves with complaints in brought to city council. The previous person who held this position did not meet those guidelines, nor the vetting, that is, if any vetting was done. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
CP 23014 Michael Fornino. Specific questions for city council regarding leadership failures.
Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Michael Fornino, Colleen. Be, know, do. Lead from the front. Let's consider the following questions, citizens petitions. Why has it become increasingly difficult to petition our local government? The First Amendment is quite clear. Filing for one should just be a formality. Shive a few things that are outright illegal, nothing can or should be denied. Why has the mayor surrendered and delegated her functions relating to the agenda to Mr. Cagle, an unelected official? Who is Mr. Cagle to deny me or anyone the right to petition this body? My rights are not subject to approval or denial by him. And who's Ms. Clements to interpret what's allowed for petition as well? She has said petitions need to be of concern to everyone in the city, then first too vague, then too specific, and she's had a hand in denials. Here's a free grammar lesson on syntax. It's a citizen's petition, singular possessive. The only person a petition has to matter to is the petitioner. It's an individual right. My answer to the question would be the same as many others. It is to restrict our ability to speak out about very obvious problems so you can maintain the weak facade of success. Council member resigns but sends his resignation to the city manager, not the mayor. He keeps this information secret for two days and only informs the mayor when directly questioned about the council member's whereabouts. When you learned he resigned, you directed the city manager to inform the council. Do we have this right? Why didn't you inform them, Madam Mayor? Doesn't the mayor preside over the council? If Mr. Cagle had done this in any other organization, he'd be removed and dismissed. When the press and then I ask you, Madam Mayor, directly about this, you tap dance and deflect. Your reply to my email wasn't as much that I have to ask everyone but you about the situation. I ask again, what exactly do you do here? You failed to execute the most basic functions of your office and are not held accountable. You proclaim that you're a full-time mayor and emphasize transparency. How? What are you or the rest of the council for that doing that is full-time? An official email, you gave no answer, so I challenge you here and now to fully qualify and quantify an answer. I stand here doubtful that you can or will. Full-time, several dwellings in this city are red-tagged, and residents are displaced. Have you personally visited or even made a phone call to check and call in their status and needs? Where are the regular town hall meetings we were promised? Real ones, where we directly ask a question and get an immediate answer, not the rigged format like last time so long ago? Where are the companies? I will remind all here in watching stream on the city of Leander fired Mr. Cagle for this exact situation we continue to be in. I've lauded KISD and the colleges for impressive opportunities offered to students. Once matriculated, where does all that skill and training get used? Certainly not here. Why do you not see that we fund and feed everyone but our own city's successful future? Can anyone name a company in the city that you could be hired to retire from? Forget Fort Cavazos, that's not Colleen, and a model for disaster proven several times in several other places. Members of staff devote numerous hours on plans and projects to bring before you. Projects that we, the people, were never consulted if we needed or wanted to begin with before the work even started. Then, when we object and show up in person to tell you our desires, how many times in a row have you voted opposite of our wishes? Now, how many times? This is the city of Colleen, not Cagleburg or your own personal monopoly boards played with rural buildings and our money. When will you start leading us in a direction that we want to go? Many of you are on record saying that Colleen is a progressive city. Interestingly enough, you failed to define what we are progressing to.
Thank you for your comments, and Mr. Cagle is not here tonight. He's in training, and also council member Sagara, and also council member board, and I will defend our council. This is an amazing council that does an extraordinary job. We have amazing staff that does even more for this city, can you can only imagine. So I am truly grateful for this council and also for our city staff. And when it comes to an agenda, that's Mr. Cagle and I, and also Mr. Mayor Protem, our former Mayor Protem. The reason Mr. Cagle sent that email, because he sent it to him. I did not have the email, and I asked him to send it out to all the council. So this council is transparent. I don't use the word progressive or not, but I do know we're moving this city forward. Thank you. Madam Secretary, citizen comments. You have four minutes on the citizen comments, and we will start out with Ellis Jones. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Grand Rising Mayor and City Council. My, my question is, I don't, I'm not understanding a clean city parade routes versus our marches. First of all, we were, we were told that everybody must use a clean parade route. Well, now we see it's kind of yes, no, maybe so. We've had people who have marches all over Colleen, different places of Colleen, and then you have another group that's told you got to follow the clean parade route. Okay, that's confusing. Doesn't make any sense. It should be one way or another. It should not be today this way and Wednesday this way. It can't be that way. We can't do that. It can't be willy-nilly. It can't be the way you feel like. It has to be defined. Now, it was defined. I was here when it was defined that we need to use this way. I was here when that happened, but now it isn't. And I'll say the perfect example, we had some.
I apologize. What item are you speaking on?
Two.
Oh, leadership failure.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what you called me for.
I'm, I'm sorry. Excuse me?
That's what I was called for. That's what I signed up for.
Okay, so leadership failure.
Yes.
And what, who are you talking about?
Our leadership.
Okay.
Our leadership wants to make the decisions and decide on passing a failure of someone when they submit their permit for a march or a parade.
City staff.
Yes. Yes, and it does come before, before a vote, and we need to define it, like I was just saying. It needs to define. Like I said, Colleen has a clean parade route, but don't know where, does a march have the same route as it voted on yes for you and not for me? We had a group that wanted to stop the violence, so they had a march, but they marched from Fort Hood Street and Hallmark to Conda Park, and if you pay attention, that's a good walk through a neighborhood, and then they walked from Conda Park to, um, Clink, Clink, uh, ah, our community center. Okay, that was a long march, but they were approved to do, and it was some discussion about it, but our leadership approved for them to do that, and then someone else gets turned down. We can't do that. It has to be one way. Or the city, our leadership, needs to define and say, this is the parade route, this is for a march, but we need to have one consensus and not two.
Um, thank you. Melissa Brown, and you will be speaking on leadership failure. Good evening. You have four minutes.
Melissa Brown, I live in Colleen. First of all, I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but a series of, a series of events over the past week have compelled me to address you. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Shanghai Bamboo Roots Association. The agenda item is specific questions for city council regarding leadership failures, and I am asking the mayor to please be patient with me, as some of my questions will require an explanation. The most important part of leadership is communication. My specific question on this is why is communication with the city so difficult? Shanghai Bamboo Roots submitted an event planned to the Arts Commission last year. They were recommended for a grant, and it was subsequently approved by the council. It was not communicated to the applicant. The permit for a primary component of their event was denied until Wednesday, May 31st, at 4:28 PM. Even though I was told that the city had been working with the applicant for what he, the city manager, described as, quote, "a long time," still the communication was withheld to the last minute, when the applicant would not have time to get an appeal on tonight's agenda. A second leadership failure is timeliness. Why are leaders able to disregard an ordinance? Section 25-158 of the Code of Ordinance requires the city manager to approve, modify, and approve or deny the application within seven days. The requested revision to take an event from a single day to two days, including the permit, was submitted in the January to February timeframe. There was a failure of timeliness when the response did not come until the end of May. There have also been failures to respond, respond to citizens. I have personally emailed the entire city council and the city manager, which I regard as the leadership of the city. I received one single email, which was still within the time for any of the council members, the mayor, or the city manager to acknowledge the request to put the appeal on tonight's agenda. However, there was a failure to respond to that. I did not receive a single response, other than one from the city manager, saying that he was disapproving one portion of the event, and the rest could proceed as originally planned. Which brings me to my final question on leadership and failures, which is clarity. In order to be a leader, you must be clear with the people you are dealing with. In the response that says the event may proceed as originally planned, there was also a link to the Arts Commission page, which clearly shows the event in question and a second day for the second part of the event. Originally, this was submitted as just a single-day event, and the only request to amend it was to take it from one day to two days and separate them into two events, making it a much more lively weekend for the city, bringing in more people on more days. That was approved by the Arts Commission, but when it went to the city manager, one portion of one day was denied, which affects the entire event. So my question that I need clarity on, hopefully tonight, and I understand the city manager is not here, which makes this very difficult, is when it is said that it may proceed the way that it was originally planned, does that mean that it can go on with all of the events that were originally planned on the, on one day? Or does that mean that the request for revision to two days is what is being denied? I, I need to know, because the applicant needs to speak to the Arts Commission, and this affects financing for them. So my question, and I know that everyone has an opportunity to answer.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, but I asked the question, so I just, I would like to give the opportunity to the council to please answer.
Your time is up. Thank you. Michael Fornino. Good evening. You have four minutes.
Michael Fornino, Colleen. I have questions and concerns with the item on the agenda. I'll just read it out, make sure, about the scenic plan. If nobody here is aware of, there's a term called Potemkin village. Any false construct devised to disguise a shortcoming or improve appearances. That being said, we've devoted several days, years, months, and dollars to throwing new coats of paint, so to speak, on revitalizing downtown, and now we want to make Colleen a scenic city. Why? There's nothing here to see. We have nice trees. So does South Amboy, New Jersey. There's nothing going on there. They have nice trees, nice sidewalks, but there's no reason to be there. So I, this, this is an effort that, while I'm sure would look like a great feather in the cap to the city, but in the end, what does it really bring us? What does it get us? I remember not so long ago, when we were devoting time and effort, I believe the figure, somebody can remember the exact figure, something like $40,000 to the beautification of the exit ramp at Willow Springs. I mean, that's not exactly a crowd drawer. I mean, people are not coming to Colleen to see how good we look. I mean, there's no opportunity here, as I stated before. Where are the companies? Let's take care of the basics first, and then we'll go out and pick out the nice curtains and the tablecloths and everything to go with it. Okay, let's, let's focus on what really matters. I mean, is this, is this really a wise use of our time and our money when it comes to the scenic value? I'm not saying that I don't want lawns to look good. I mean, you want the city to look good. Let's get on code enforcement. Get people to clean up their yards, mow the lawns, sweep their sidewalks. That would make it scenic enough, just for people, hey, I want to live here. So I'm just, once again, considering this, I'm sure it has some merit and some value, but in the big picture, I'm not seeing it, and neither should anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jack.
Madam Mayor, Council, James Ralston, 408 Yates Road, Colleen, Texas. I hesitated to speak on this item because I may be having a lot of the questions answered when the folks actually do their briefing, but since I can't speak after, I have to speak in advance. I've got a couple of questions about the HOP plan. I'm kind of looking, and I'm kind of confused by the slides, because some of them talk about service schedules and having a commuter service, but the next two slides, conceptual demo only, without fixed route. Now, the way I read, when I did my research on this, was the microtransit is supposed to augment a fixed system, but I'm not really seeing, and it may be, they may explain that, how the fixed system fits in there. I'm seeing lots of great numbers on how much this is going to improve things, but I'm not really seeing any evidence of where they got those numbers from. One number that especially is confusing me is we had a little over 100,000 passengers in 2022, but the projection for Colleen for passengers is 300,000. That's a times-three increase. And again, I'm not seeing anything in here on how we're going to do that. Maybe there's some out there that work. My research didn't find any that the microtransit was actually working. The ones that were said to be working were actually fixed route-type systems. And I'm looking at the cost of this, and I'm looking at the number of riders, and I'm suspecting maybe we could buy everybody a car and just save ourselves the trouble. Now, I'm sure there's going to be lots of good answers, and they may answer some of those questions and relieve my mind some, but it's easier not to spend money until you know the answers to the questions before you spend the money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, when it comes to our citizen comments, it states the mayor and the council member shall have one minute to respond to citizen comments with a statement or explanation when engaging in dialogue. On council, we have four representatives, including myself, with just five minutes, and I wanted to yield our time to Chief Kobinsky, and it has to be in two minutes, and Assistant Chief Gerhart. The item that was discussed was about the route, the parade, and the march, and I think that's significant because staff did make a decision, and that decision, I want the audience to know why that decision was made, and it will also be on our agenda, agenda next week to go into more detail. So I want to yield that time, our time, to them to explain to the audience for transparency's sake. Mayor Protem, is that okay with you? All right. Chief Kobinsky and Assistant Chief Gerhart, you both have two minutes and 10 seconds, so we won't go over that five minutes. I guess I could say six, because our city attorney is also standing in for Mr. Cagle. So the question was that the staff made a decision. It was based on talking to the experts in that field, that would be our fire chief and our police chief, and I know it was surrounding safety. So Chief Kobinsky, would you please go first?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and yes, absolutely. Thank you for the time. We're going to be much better prepared for this appeal at next meeting. We were just made aware of the appeal of the denial less than 48 hours ago, and so Chief Gerhart, myself, and Peter Perez, the emergency management director, are preparing a complete response with a timeline of the meeting we had with the, the requester for the permit, the changes that were made, the significant changes that were made, and then the basis of our denial based on public safety. In a very brief nutshell, the biggest concern is that a trail ride has changed to a parade with walkers, and the request is to shut down WS Young and Elms Road at 3:00 in the afternoon on a Friday. Very major safety concern when we're going to have horses and kids and family members, and the requesters, the parade, the permit request was to keep traffic open and just have police manage the traffic flow, and we are not comfortable with that whatsoever, in the fact that having traffic around horses and walkers on a four-lane road with the center turn lane on a Friday afternoon, right during rush hour, is a very major concern to us. So that is the basis for our denial in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer other questions, but I feel we'll be better prepared to give you all the timelines, the meetings, and everything else during the appeal process at next week's meeting.
Yes, sir. We'll wait for more detail, details next week. Assistant Chief Gerhart, are you on the same accord? Would you like to speak, sir?
Absolutely. Chief Kobinsky said it well.
Chief Kobinski said it well. We have the exact same concerns he does, and there's a few others when it comes to staffing, but our primary concern is public safety on that road, those major arterial roads inside Colleen, and shutting them down at that time of day, having horses, children walking, and vehicles all in proximity to each other is, is not going to be a good mix, and we didn't think it could be pulled off safely, and that's, that's our reasons.
Yes, sir. We look forward to your detailed brief next week. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Items for discussion at workshop. Council, you have five minutes to speak twice. Madam Secretary.
DS 23057, discuss proposed FY 2023-2024 budget related to community partners.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As we all know, we are in the process of the fiscal year budget for fiscal year '24, and during that process, we invite the community partners that will receive funding to present an overview of their budget to the city council. This evening, we have Hill Country Transit District, KEDC, Belk County Health District, the National Mountain Warfare Foundation, and the Tax Appreso District of Belk County to present the overview of the budget. First, we're going to have Mr. Raymond Suarez and Mr. Darryl Burton from the Hill Country Transit District to go over the review.
Thank you. Good evening, sirs. You have four minutes. Thank you for coming out today.
To clarify, four minutes? We were told we had 20 minutes.
No, 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 no.
All right, we'll, we will.
Are you serious about the 20 minutes?
Yes, but that's, that's fine.
Oh. Okay, sir, you can use your 20 minutes.
All right, thank you much. I'll try to power through this as fast as we can. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. We're here to propose the budget for the Hill Country Transit District. I'll, I'll go through these quickly because you have some of the budget information already available to you, but this, the culmination of this proposal has been studied for about a year and a half. The Hill Country Transit District hired a consultant prior to the Hendrickson Transportation Group, taking over management under a contract with the Hill Country Transit District Board to review the, the services. I think it's pretty well understood that many elected officials, members of the board, and stakeholders were interviewed. There was a desire for a smooth regional system so that people could commute across the region to basically respond to a fast-growing, the fast-growing communities in the area. One of the, the shortfalls has always been dedicated local funding. We have federal and state dollars that, that are dedicated to the Colleen UZA, which is, which supports services in Harker Heights, Copper's Cove, and of course, Colleen. And the, the evidence of the service today, I addressed the board, I want to say it was seven, eight months ago, I think there's been plenty of dialogue around the lack of service effectiveness and efficiency. There were questions about how to improve it, what was the cost of service going to take. I'm here today to present an overview of that. But before we get to the, to the solution, I want to just give some context historically to what's happened to ridership over time and the reasons for it. In 2013, 14, the agency kind of reached its, its pinnacle of ridership of 900,000. It's broken out into three different areas, fixed route service, STS, which is our paratransit service, and non-emergency medical transport, as well as rural. The health and human services within the state of Texas went to a broker system, which inserted a third party, which started distributing some of the, a significant number of our non-emergency medical transport trips to third parties, which has resulted in a significant drop, not only in ridership, but revenue for the agency, which we used to use for local share. So while the, the cities gained the benefit of not having local contributions because of that revenue, those revenue sources have dried up. We don't anticipate them coming back. We don't see the city, the state going to, away from the broker system, and so we don't see that revenue source rebounding. On top of that, we've had Uber, Lyft, DoorDash, and others come into the marketplace. In 16, 17, 18, or 19, we had service cuts. Those cuts have a compounding impact, a negative impact on ridership across the region, and then we all were impacted by COVID-19, which saw the ridership. And by the way, these, these trends are consistent nationwide, and you can also see that same trend around the world and, and other, other parts of the world. So the results of that reduction in local services that we use from the non-emergency medical transport revenue, the agency started cutting services, that resulted in an impact that you can see here, red line being the benchmark that, that most transit authorities use for planning. If you're right of the benchmark, red line, it means that the services are, are fairly effective. If you're to the left of it, typically you would take a route and you would, you would modify it or cancel it because it's not meeting its service standard. So that's typically an official service standard that, that transit agencies adopt as part of their service transit planning requirements. On the right side, you can see in 2022, we reduced or discontinued routes. The remaining routes, the majority of them, are underperforming. When you look at it, this is the reason why. You can see in each color, there's, it looks like spaghetti, that's the route that the bus takes. It's on an hourly service. It runs in one direction, so if you happen to be going in the opposite direction, you have to get on the bus, go all the way around to your final destination. If you're trying to get across from, let's say, Copper's Cove to Temple, you have to transfer multiple times to, to get there, so it could literally take you many hours to get from, let's say, Cove to the Veterans Hospital, and then reverse commute is the same challenge. That's not typical of what you would like to see in fixed route service, especially if it's running on hourly frequencies, which is basically the minimum standard. And on top of all these routes, you have in pink, a requirement, if you're running fixed route, if you're using federal dollars, you have to provide complimentary ADA service. So you have basically two different services that are running inefficiently, and we'd like to change that by connecting from Copper's Cove to Temple with a commuter service that runs on a higher frequency. And then you'll see that also in the, the Temple UZA, which is a small UZA, Belton and Temple, and their fixed routes, and that's the current state of activity. Our recommendations, because the regional growth is important to sustain for our businesses, as well as getting people to, to basic health and human service needs, and, and to food and entertainment, and to, and to jobs, because job creation is really important, and job sustainability is important as well. We're proposing that we go to a microtransit service that works extremely well in less dense cities, usually one high, very high density to run a fixed route service in lower density communities, including cities the size of Colleen. On-demand seems to be the trend across the country, and our, our company has been deploying these with a high degree of success. We are looking at connecting all of these communities with a commuter service, and I will tell you that there are options for the commuter service. What we originally budgeted was a 30-minute frequency on that commuter service at approximately 1.6 million. But in order to make that happen, we need all the cities to contribute their fair share. So we have some options for 30 minutes, an hour, and then other options if we're not running the commuter service around van pool strategies. I think it's also important to note that Fort Cavazos, since we implemented this proposal, we've made some changes, but they're interested in also deploying a microtransit solution on base. There's an estimated project proposal that's being sent up, the chain of command, approximately $5 million. They also have interest in that service connecting to the HOP's regional system, and there's been a, a fee tied to each hour of service so that as their active-duty personnel and their family members have not, not only access on base, they want them to have access to the greater system. There's no guarantee that's going to happen, but it looks very promising, so that funding, if it's made available, would, would dovetail into about the same timeframe as we would be deploying this service, which would be the first of, of the, probably the first quarter, into the first quarter of 2024, and that would generate some additional funds for this connector service. But as we're looking at, at how do we budget for it, we want to make sure that we do that properly. So all of these different activities that are, that are here, or variables, are typically how you assess equity, not equity, I'm sorry, but value to the system. As your, as your riders and your community members look at transit, is it accessible, number one? Does it have coverage? Does it get where I need to go? Is it equitable where the service is? Once I'm on the service, assuming that I have access to it, how long do I have to wait for it, and how, what is my travel time? And how many hours a day does it serve? And what information is available for how to make, how to make it easy for me to ride? And then ultimately, what does it cost me, and what does it cost the city? And so all these variables are taken into consideration as we look at planning the, the different types of service, whether it be fixed route or on-demand, and this is how we came up with a proposal. We believe that on-demand is going to do a very good job of providing curb-to-curb service, which you don't have today with, with your fixed route service. Your frequency is going to increase quite a bit. Because these vehicles are available, you're going to have more of them in your city. You'll have the ability to share rides. All this system is based on a shared ride, not a, not a single occupancy vehicle like Uber and Lyft currently do. And remember that you receive significant dollars, both in, in federal and state dollars, and to access those federal and state dollars, there's an expectation that you're running transit. So if you just want to look at an Uber model, you're not going to have those federal and state dollars that are accessible to you to actually leverage. You have roughly $2.6 million of federal and state money, and so for every dollar that you spend, you get to draw down those federal and state dollars. And for every driver that, that the HOP puts out on the street, they're typically required to have drug and alcohol testing. They go through a lot of training to help folks that, that have ambulatory needs and assistance, and so there's a, quite a bit of training that goes along with, with the services that the agency will provide. We're not proposing Uber or Lyft as a primary service. This is a service that the HOP would run with new technology that's available that allows us to perform on-demand rides. So the services that we're proposing would be from 7:00 to 9:00 currently. That's, that's 14 hours of service daily. Today, you have 12 hours of service. The commuter service, if it's implemented, would be from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and would run across the region. The expected wait time is 30 minutes for a vehicle, and the expected travel time is less than 10 minutes, but it depends on distance, and during off-peak, it would be 40 minutes. Bear in mind that today, each route runs on an hourly frequency, and we're expecting for your city 15 peak vehicles, 12 off-peak vehicles. You can see here how the distribution in the Colleen UZA would work. There'd be three vehicles in Copper's Cove. These are not intended to be zones. It's how we partitioned the entire service area, but you can see that there's 15 vehicles that would be assigned, and three vehicles to Harker Heights for a total of 21 vehicles. And we would augment that in either gaps or later service hours, or if we're running at a frequency higher than 30 to 40 minutes, we could dispatch an Uber or Lyft. Bear in mind that you'd have to, you'd have to compensate Uber and Lyft for the total trip, which typically is $10 to $12. So if the patron is paying two to three, then we would be responsible for paying the extra, so you don't want to make that your primary source of service, but it works really, really well when, when we contract with a third-party service provider so that we're creating the most effective and efficient mobility service possible. Here's a look at the Temple UZA. I won't spend a lot of time on that, so we can move forward. These are the types of vehicles that we would use. You can see they're not sedans, they're, they're high floor, or plenty of access for you to get in the vehicle. It has, they're wheelchair-equipped, will use minivans, and will, and, and a, a van that carries up to 12 people, including wheelchairs. You'll use a software app to provide basically a download, so it very much works that way, but you also have a concierge service, so if you don't have a smartphone, you can call our customer service, they'll set up a trip for you. You just tell them where you are and where you want to go, and they'll pick up and drop you off. It works curb-to-curb with software. It's mandated that we provide shared ride service, so our expectation is that we'll be carrying, and this is very consistent across the country, anywhere from four to eight people per trip, which, if you go back to the bar chart that showed kind of the, the red dashed line, that will absolutely support the majority of the areas that we were looking to cover. And then we'll create marketing material. There, there'll be different ways for people to access and download the information. We, we will work with businesses in order to make sure that they have information. We'll work with your city to define the exact lines of the service area that we're going to cover, and as soon as you do that, people download the app, they start using it. Literally, this is an example of literally 30 days after we deployed it. It's a heat map. It shows, the higher red color shows how many people are actually using it. In this case, there's a highway that runs very similar to how your, your city is set up here. There's a highway that runs where the majority of that red is. There's also a junior college that is in, in this area, and you can see that people are using it in every corner of the service area, and that's very consistent with what we see everywhere we deploy it. So it gives you a better sense of equity, the distribution of the service, the accessibility in the neighborhoods. It should help reduce congestion on your roads because we won't have buses stopping at bus stops. You'll have vans that can pull off the main arterials, and they weigh a lot less, so you'll have less potholes. It'll also consume less fuel, and so there's a lot of benefits that come with this type of service. And then you get tremendous metrics. This is by day, passengers. You can also break it down by hour. Let me back up just for a second, but you can also see the average wait time is 19 minutes, the average travel time is 17 minutes. You have the ability through the app to leave immediate information about anything with the service, as well as how you feel, whether or not the service is valuable. Consistently across the country, when we deploy this service, and a lot of transit agencies are deploying this service, they get high, high grades for customer service satisfaction because it's so much more easy to access and get where you need to go. And then you can keep track of your average wait times, your demand by hour. So as we start getting to a point where there's so much frequency and a lot of volume, then we can convert that to a fixed route, but rather trying to guess where the fixed route should be, you deploy this service, you look at demand, as that demand grows, then you put in a fixed route, and this is a much better way to, to serve your community. And if there's a demand for fixed route, we will put fixed route back in, but at this point, we believe this is a much more effective way to deliver service to you. Our current ridership is, is shown here for the routes that are served in Colleen. There's roughly 93,000 trips last year. I'm sorry about that. Let me go back one. And then you can see the average passengers per hour. Most of those, for the exception of Route 4, we can easily carry with microtransit. We'll have more vehicles, so those people will have a lot more opportunities rather than each hour. They'll have 30-minute, in some cases, 15 or 20-minute waits, so they'll, they'll have much more accessibility than they have in the past. And because there's so many more vehicles that are available at a higher frequency, typically we're seeing two to three times the ridership on this type of service than what you've seen in the past. When we initially put this proposal together, we were contemplating 30-minute frequency on the commuter service or connector service. We're probably looking at hourly frequency at best. We also did not have access to the FY '24 apportionments for federal and state. We do have those now. So I'm happy to say that for Colleen, this had 1.15 million. You currently contribute 700, roughly $750,000 to the transit service today for, for your services. We believe that, that $750,000 that you're contributing this year, if you do that next year, that should be sufficient to deliver the service, so there will be no increased requests. This request was an older version, we didn't have time to change it, and so the, the good news here, I, I do believe, is that you will wind up, this council more or less challenged us the last time that we were here to improve, come back with a better service plan. Ms. Cobb, you said, hey, I want to see better than what we have. Ms. Cobb, you said, hey, I want to see better than what we have. I believe my predecessor, the question was asked, what is it going to cost to make it better? And they said double. Well, I'm here to tell you that with this plan, the customer satisfaction should be much higher, the value to your city should be much higher. It's not going to cost you more than what you have. And I believe that we can do better than where we are today. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that detailed presentation. So, I just have a couple of questions. With Route 245 and the Connector 100 to Copper's Cove, so with the $750,000 that we are already paying, we can continue, we will be in the new system with the microtransit?
Correct.
But if we want to add an additional route, have you put in the cost for that?
Let me make sure I understand. So, what we're proposing is the existing routes are replaced with microtransit.
Correct.
And what that'll actually do is create more jobs than what we have today. We don't anticipate anybody, any workforce reductions with that. So, the drivers that are here today are going to be there tomorrow. And to answer your question, I wanted to add that. If you want to add service, it'll depend on, if you want to add a Saturday or Sunday, or if you want to extend the boundaries of the service area, it'll depend, we will work with the city, to determine whether we can do it within the existing budget. Sometimes, you can do that if it's moving the boundary one or two streets over, and it's not going to add additional drivers. If you're trying to add another, you know, five square miles of service area, then it may require another driver and another vehicle. And so, those are things that we would work with the city to determine, and then we would come back and estimate those costs so that we can grow your system.
Okay. Thank you for that. My next question is that you have a van, 12 people on the van. So, if I'm going to hypothetically HEB, and someone else is going a different route, and you say, get there in seven minutes, how does that work?
So, the system will look much like software applications do today. They pull, they will look at all requests within a certain time window and say, okay, can we efficiently move, let's say, seven people that are going approximately in the same direction? They don't have to all go to HEB. They just may be going in the same direction. So, it's much like an airport service when you're all getting on a super shuttle. You might get dropped off on the way to different destinations. And then, once that trip finalizes at HEB, then it's available to go in another direction. It'll group a lot of people that are trying to go in approximately the same direction. So, as you get on it, you may not go directly to your house. If you're going to do that, and you have the money to do it, and you're in a hurry, you could call Uber today to do that because that's a single ride. You could also do that with a taxi. But we're in the transit business, so we want to make sure that we're grouping trips. And you may have to be, you know, go three or four blocks out of your way, but it's going to pick people up and drop them off along an origin and a destination. So, whatever the longest origin and destination trip is, it'll pick people up and drop them off as it goes. So, once that first pick, trip gets picked up, if somebody else says, hey, I need to be picked up, and there's a vehicle that's already going your way, it's going to pick you up. It'll stop and pick you up and take you.
Okay. And my other question is, so the buses are just going away?
That we're going to repurpose those buses for the connector service. That's what we'd like to do. But it just depends on whether we get all the cities to agree for the connector service and what that's going to cost. And we're still in the process of getting that in agreement.
And the cost to be on the transit, microtransit van, it would be the same for senior citizens? Does the rate, how would that work?
Thank you for asking that question. Fair policy is another layer of this that needs to be discussed. In the 20-year history of the agency, since it started providing mobility services to your cities, we have not had a fair increase. It's been a dollar, it's stayed a dollar. That's not typical. For certain classifications, whether it be students, people over a certain age, folks that have been, that are ADA-approved, that they want to ride fixed route, they typically are on a discounted fare program. It's usually half of the cost of the original fare price. Most transit agencies that provide even fixed route service are around $1.50. Microtransit, if you were to take an Uber trip across your town, could cost you $10 or $12. So, when people put in these types of systems, they tend to look at the fare policy and raise it, not significantly, because you want, typically, you want your fare to be equal to whatever your fixed route service is. But I think it's warranted to look at a $1.50 to $2.00 rate, assuming that you're carrying 900,000 passengers. And if your average fare is a dollar, then that's $900,000 of revenue. If you're a $1.50, then your average fare will be typically a dollar because you have discounted fares and you have people that are going to pay full fare. So, it'll average out about a dollar. So, if you want, if you want a $1.50 worth of revenue, then you charge $2, and the discount is like a $1.25. So, those are discussions that the board has to have to make sure that we're taking fare policy into consideration. But it is a good way to reduce the direct contribution of the city and to make sure that there's buy-in from the people that use it. With the Uber system, you're just subsidizing people that are going to use Uber. And that's not necessarily a good, efficient way to use your funds. But fair policy certainly is important. I also think that, look, transit, if you were to call the governor's office, which I have, and you were to ask the governor's office for economic development, given the top 10 reasons businesses relocate to an area, transit is usually in that top 10 reasons. So, we have heard from different studies in this region that getting people across our service area is important, not only for medical and just healthcare and quality of life, but also to make sure that we have a good, healthy business environment. So, if we want to attract more businesses, one of the first things to look at is, do you have a transit system? And so, we think that's important as well.
Thank you, sir. Counselor, any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Thank you. And I see you did make the improvements, but I'm still concerned. This looks really good on paper. It really does. I'm looking at all the different routes. But some of the old routes that were there, will we have those routes? It's going to be very important that our north side of town is able to get throughout all of this city and get back and have the necessary routes. And wheelchairs and some of the safety things that we have are mighty big. And those transits that I'm looking at, you're not going to be able to hold too many people who, if they have accessory items, to be on their van. And the third thing that I'm concerned with is the money. If we go up in price, and we got 15 buses, and we're going to pay more, I think that was like $900,000, right? That's what we looked at when we looked, if I'm not mistaken. When we look, the money doesn't matter right now because you know I will get all into money.
900,000 passengers, I think is what we're looking at.
We're going to look at the 900 passengers at a dollar. But if you're, if these transit systems are so small, and when you get to the bus stop, what if we have 11.1 people with a wheelchair? Does a route, it comes back every 30 minutes to hit that point? Or does it just, what happens? I know we used to have the hour routes, but it's going to be a 30-minute route. And if they're standing out there waiting for that second route to come, will they have something to keep them dry? Because the HOP systems had the covers. Will the transit city, will there be a bench? There's just so many concerns when I think about the health and safety and welfare of a person getting on the bus. I get it, 15 buses running around, little buses running around town. But will it take care of everyone? When we start looking at that number and that money, will they get vouchers? I saw, I saw the price break down. But I'm concerned if I'm, well, hey, I'm 55 years old, and I get a voucher. I don't have a dollar and 50 cent on me on that day. Do I buy monthly vouchers? Can I still get a ride? What?
All of that still applies and works with the system. So, there are many barriers to transit. There always have been.
Yes.
I would say this is probably accurate for your city, although I haven't analyzed it. Many neighborhoods don't have, they're not ADA-compliant. If you go out there today, the majority of the bus stops are not ADA-compliant. The beauty of this service is you're not having to go in your wheelchair to a bus stop. This vehicle picks you up either at your house, it picks you up at your office, it picks you up at a shopping center, it picks you up wherever you are. So, the vehicle's coming to you, it's not going somewhere else. It's a very large benefit to the city and breaks down a lot of the equity barriers that have existed. My mother was a dialysis patient and used the equivalent of our STS service. And I know how vital it is. And I'll tell you that this service is going to do the same thing. Moreover, we have vehicles today, our STS buses, that can handle multiple wheelchairs. These vehicles do handle oversized mobility devices. And I don't see that as being a challenge. As far as the pay structures and all that, the application allows for all those same voucher programs to work. And when they get on the vehicle, they just show their pass, and they get on, and there's no issue. This should create a lot less barrier for people to get passes because they have access either to the website or on a phone to pay for their service. And they can buy a single pass, a day pass, a weekly pass, a monthly pass, an annual pass through the system, which you can't do today.
And that's important, the accessibility of having a telephone that works. You know how many times a person telephone will go out in the run of a month because they don't have the money to pay the bill? So, if they don't have, if they have a dead phone, and they're trying to catch a bus, I like what Mayor said in reference to making our quality of life better. But when we start looking at the quality of life, we have to look at so many things. And I know this is just a transit, shut up, Ms. Cobb. We get a transit system, we get a bus, we're going to give you all those routes you wanted. But if we don't have, then we can't, it won't be an accessibility to get to your house. If we don't have that system, we don't. But I'm going to wait because I know there's more coming.
Well, I will say that as a CEO of a transit system, I've worked for Dallas area for transit, I've managed the Denton County Transportation Authority, I collaborate with CEOs all over the country. And this is hotly debated everywhere. I've seen transit agencies that slowly replace their fixed route service. There tends to be some concern about doing it. And then, there's overwhelming, you know, result in, after you do it, how more convenient it is. There's always accessibility issues. Everywhere you go, there's always going to be challenges that we face. What we tried to do is analyze this, come up with a response to this, the desire of not only Colleen, but all those cities that have been contributing to the HOP for many years. And as a transit, multi-decade, passionate manager of transit systems, I do believe this is going to add value to your city if you go in this direction.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, sir, for that presentation. The fact that the service is going to go door-to-door, I think, is huge, especially for a lot of my constituency on the north side. I know there were some issues with somebody being just outside of the radius and not being able to get picked up previously. So, this would resolve a lot of those particular challenges. My only question is, right now, is regarding the Saturdays. I see that we've extended the hours on the actual pickup. But the Saturday pickup, even if it were running for a matter of a few hours, is there a reason why we don't run on a Saturday?
Funding. Typically, Saturdays and Sundays are, have less, they're less effective because not as many people are using the service. So, with fixed route, obviously, running that bus for the same number of hours, people aren't necessarily commuting to work. They're not necessarily going to specialists for their appointments. Some do. I don't want to make a statement that's overreaching. But you tend to see, in all the transit, everywhere you go, you see a very significant drop-off after 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, and Saturday and Sunday, even though it's vital to people. There's still people that live, work, and do all kinds of things on weekends, but the number of people that you move tends to be less. That's why I think that we certainly need to look at Saturdays and Sundays. And I believe with the funding that's available, we can look at that. And then, depending on what we see, how your community reacts to the service, we can customize the service because we will have embedded into the system the ability to either run the service ourselves or to use third parties that may already be in the area to move people that need access to important trips. So, I think that's the benefit. I know this sounds like a panacea, but in reality, it does solve a lot of problems. I think that's why I'm so passionate about it and excited. I enjoy doing this all over the country because I think the value to the cities is much greater than a conventional fixed route bus. The only benefit that I see with the fixed route bus in an area that has less density, which you're in, is you can walk to a bus route, not have to have technology, not have to ask somebody to book a ride or book it in advance, and you can sit there and wait. But that's not a great experience either because you don't know when that vehicle's coming. You may be standing in a field. You may not have a shelter because most transit agencies don't have shelters at every bus stop. And I think when you look at all of those negative barriers to transit, this type of service outweighs a lot of that. We're not going to be able to solve every issue that transit has, but we think this solves many of them for your community.
Right. I would agree, based on what I'm hearing today. And so, you're saying that there's customizable so that we could always see and evaluate because it's not fixed route, because it is the door-to-door option. I was just wondering if you thought that Saturdays, would that make a difference in that?
I think Saturdays, Saturdays for sure. Sundays, certainly, we can take a look at that. What we're proposing at this point is getting everyone, first thing is, most of the cities and definitely the rural partners have not paid in a lot. Colleen has been paying for a few routes to the tune of $750,000. And that's because the HOP has been fortunate in having that non-emergency revenue that we can then turn around and use. That's no longer available. Most transit agencies, there's a local share. It comes in the form of sales tax, or TIRS or TIF, but there's some dedicated funding, which this agency doesn't have. So, the first challenge we have is making sure that everybody's willing to pay in their fair share. The second thing we want to do is we want to make sure that we have a baseline for what we were doing before, what are we going to do now? So, start the service. We are increasing the hours of service to 9:00 p.m. during the weekdays. But as soon as we see, it'll take maybe three, six months for us to really get the message out, everybody using the system, my guess is you'll get a lot of positive feedback. And the question typically is, well, how do we expand it? And you have a couple of options. You can expand geography, you can also expand hours of service, and you can expand days of service. But rather than come in and ask you for more money, at this point, we feel like if you can confidently budget what you're budgeting now, I think we can deploy the service. We'll get it out there, we'll get it working. We have some discussions that we need to have regionally about the connector service, which is a fixed route service from Cove to Temple. And then, we can immediately start talking about additional hours of service and going out on Saturdays and Sundays. But we have to get everybody on the same page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon.
Well, I think this is moving forward in a lot of ways because you won't have the citizens standing outside in the weather, in the cold, in the heat. And the advantage is that you're picking them up at their home or their businesses. That's a big forwardness in terms of just change. The question that I have is, what is the near? The question that I have is, what is the nearest city that this service is being used right now?
North Texas, DART has, I don't know, dozens of these microtransit zones. Fort Worth Transit Authority has deployed them.
You're saying Plano? You say North Texas?
Yes. DART, so DART is 13 member cities, including Plano. So you, you have these running in Plano. You have them running in South Dallas. You have them running all over Dallas and all the surrounding metroplex, Addison, Fort Worth, Denton, Lewisville, the McKinney. And there's, I think, six different transit authorities there. You're starting to see them deployed in Austin. Just about every transit, larger transit authority is looking at moving in this direction or already has to a certain extent. Arlington, the city of Arlington never had a transit system. They deployed a solution called VIA. VIA is a third-party transit provider. They use exclusively minivans. So it doesn't meet some of the, the requirements, but their, their ridership has gone extraordinarily well. They deployed it citywide. DCTA deployed VIA as well across three cities, across a county. So this is not, this is not bleeding-edge technology. It's not bleeding-edge service, but it is leading edge. And I think there's plenty of, of examples all across the country where this type of service is being introduced. What you'll see in a lot of agencies is you'll see a mix of fixed route and microtransit, but that's typically where you see high, high demand, where you have 14, 15, 28, 30 people needing to go all in the same direction at the same time. Microtransit doesn't do as good a job. It's more expensive to run it. And so this is the beauty of what we are going to do is we deploy this. We're going to have buses. We're not going to get rid of them right away. And if we see high demand and high volume, we'll put a bus, we'll put a bus route right in wherever that demand is. But we won't be guessing at it because the data is going to show those corridors. You go back to that heat map, you'll see the corridor where there's a lot of traffic and it makes sense to put a fixed route in there. We will absolutely do that.
Does this thing, it would not carry, cover the entire city?
That is correct.
Okay. So somebody in the south Colleen, they couldn't, they would not have access to this? Or North Colleen?
Today, your bus service doesn't cover a city. You go to any city in the country, your bus service does not cover the four corners of the, of the city.
And I know that. But this is where you can call and they can pick you up.
Correct.
So that wouldn't be covered if you live?
Some cities have, have said, we want to budget enough money to cover the four corners. Other cities say it's just cost prohibitive. We can't do it. It really comes down to a funding issue. Now, what we might be able to do for, this is again, where the system that we're proposing is not a one-size-fits-all. We're going to run microtransit so that, because we have people that know how to do that, we're going to include paratransit and ADA and all these, all these requirements that we have within, when the body of work that we're performing. But if the, if the council desires to, to serve a particular area, we can have a discussion about how we do that. It doesn't necessarily have to be the four corners because a lot of your, a lot of your geography is, if, if you take a vehicle and you, and you personalize that vehicle to go pick somebody up that's in a more rural part of your city, then that vehicle is going to be dedicated to go pick up that person. That's why fixed route only works in a very small area. So if that vehicle is out of, is, is out of capacity because it's going to pick up that person, then there's not other, it, it doesn't make itself available to pick up more people. And that is just, going back to those bullets of what makes a value, it's, how many people do I carry for what money we have available to us? And at what frequency are we carrying them so that it actually creates a valuable system that we don't have today? And that's going to be the challenge for this council. It happens everywhere. You will have somebody that says, well, hey, I just live three blocks away. Why don't I, why don't I have access to it? And that's, that's where we're going to have to work in partnership to say, well, we have available funds to do this today. And we'll, we'll have to figure out how to, how to grow it in the future. But most transit agencies don't cover the four corners of their cities.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Good evening, council, and our guests as well presenting. I went through the presentation and I also sit on the Central Texas Regional Advisory, Transportation Advisory Group. And I know this discussion's been a long time coming or getting to this point. I also understand that we have to transition from the fixed route service to this one to eventually get to the mass transit service on a larger scale as the city grows. So I understand the challenges and it's good to see that you guys have been working so hard to come up with a, a newer solution that is improved. And I believe this is improved. But I, I do have just a few particular questions. I noticed on the west side of Colleen, the service area does not address those who might be going to hospital, Advent Health, Central Texas, the airport, the community college, if I'm not mistaken, or the University of Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas. I know there's demand, or rather, I like, I'm curious to find out what type of, what the data says about the demand for those locations on the west side. The route that you, the, the service area in particular that you guys have established is everywhere north of West Dance Slur, but nowhere south. And so I'd like to have a better understanding of where you are on that decision.
I'm, I'm going to ask my, my partner in crime here, Darrell Burtner, who's been with the agency over eight years, runs transit operations, to, to join me if he can add some alia here. We have been in conversations with Texas A&amp;M University literally this week. I, I will tell you that, that airport connections and currently, we, we don't, we don't quite understand, I don't think Texas A&amp;M understands the demand that is, is really, can be generated from including Texas A&amp;M at this point. That's the reason we haven't done that. Typically, airport services don't generate a lot of, of ridership. And I'm going to let Darrell just talk about, because we used to provide service.
We did.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. This is an exciting topic for me. I just love this. And to answer your question, though, specifically the airport, we did use to run a route out to the airport. We had dismal ridership. Did there, I, I do agree there is demand in various places around the city. But when we ran the, the, I forget which route number it was, but when we ran a route out to the airport, we, we literally just did not have anyone riding. We also used to run one out to the jail, same thing there. Just, so we have, we do have a history of testing the waters and all of this. However, things have grown a lot since then as well. There was a lot more housing developments out in some of those areas. We are not opposed to trying those things again. To a certain degree, we are really needing to take some baby steps. And the gentleman who asked some questions about the transit, this concept of taking the fixed routes away at first, boy, we debated that over and over with our staff. And we had, we had people, some people for it, some people against it. But truly, for us to, to understand all of the new areas that have been developed, we really need to run this type of a microtransit system in order to learn via these heat maps that we will get back. The heat maps are very clear. They will tell us where the most ridership is and where it is not. So at that point, then yes, we will start exploring those. And maybe it's just three or four months' worth of data to start getting that information. But we can start making some conclusions on that and start trying some of these areas again. And I would like to address one more thing. I was sitting on the edge of my seat wanting to say this. Raymond's a nice guy, but I didn't know him from Adam when he first came here. When did you come?
September.
September. So I've known him since September. And I am very much a trust-but-verify kind of guy. So he came to me. He started explaining microtransit. I started asking tons of questions. And in the end, I've spent the last year, almost nine, nine or 10 months now, going to different forums. Went to Denver recently for the Southwest Transit Association Conference. Talked to people out in Laredo and Austin and many of the Dallas, many of the areas that he just named off a little while ago. And I personally have talked to about 24 of these systems. And I keep expecting somebody to, I, I say, tell me, you've started microtransit. Tell me what you think of it, et cetera. I keep expecting somebody to throw a yellow flag. But to, to a person that I've talked to, no one has thrown a yellow or a red flag. They've all, and these are CEOs and general managers of, of systems all over Texas and, and outside of Texas to a degree. And every one of them has said, oh, it's the best thing we ever did. And, and I do agree. Some of them kept their fixed route. Some of them got rid of the fixed routes altogether and brought them back slowly. Some just did a mild mix right from the start. But they always, they, they, they have all succeeded in the microtransit side of it. And their constituents and their cities and their stakeholders have all come back asking for, can we get more of this? So it's a, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Darrell, for those comments. Councilmember Boyd, just to follow up, this is where the combination of microtransit run by the, by the entity and having something like Uber or Lyft or third-party.
Sir, we have to halt the meeting until Mr. Everest come back. Because we have to have a corner before we can move forward. And the time is 7:21.
All right. We have our council members taken under consideration. We still have other items on the agenda. We have time, 7:24. And we call the meeting back to order. Councilmember Boyd.
Let me, let me follow up, if I may, to answer a specific question that you had regarding the airport. With, with the integration and accessibility to the TNCs, Uber, Lyft, and others, we can, we can certainly create a service that would be based on per-trip costs or, or demand. There are, we've done this successfully in other parts of the country where through the hop, we can offer services to and from the airport. And we would utilize a third party to provide that to such time that we can dictate what the demand actually looks like. And if the costs start getting to the point that it makes more sense for us to operate it, then we can operate it. We currently don't have that contemplated at this point. Thank you.
I see. And the last question I had was, it kind of goes to Councilmember Solomon's point. If the southern portion of West Colleen is not a part of the service area, will they be, is it a fact that they won't be able to participate in any form of this new service?
We've proposed the service area. It's something that we would certainly be open to exploring as we, as we actually purchase the software and we start modeling the service area and what we think the, the frequencies will be. We've done our own analysis and calculations on it. My long-winded comment, sorry, is we will certainly take a look at it. And if it makes sense that we can do it within the existing budget, we can do that. If it's going to require additional budget, we'd have to come back and ask you for, for that consideration.
Sure. And I understand that. The, the fact is, there are, there may be an assumption that those who live on that portion of West Colleen, if you will, have transportation and would not need a use for transit, but there are cases where there is a need for transit to go to the north side of Colleen or the eastern portion or central Colleen. Those, those needs likely do exist. And so I would like to see that data. That data is not available unless they're part of the service area. So I would ask the council to take into consideration of making adjustments to make sure we get a full scope of data or demand rather as we move forward.
Very good.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Cobb.
I'm going to just chime in. I agree with everyone, but I sure would love to see a whole city being serviced and not portions. That's it for me.
Thank you. Sir, just to do a quick recap, I know that everything comes with a cost. But these are some of the concerns of the council. And I'm not looking for an answer. I just would like for you to bring us more options. And one of them, sure, Saturday and Sunday, how much that will cost. That's important to the council. And extra services for the routes two to three blocks within the boundary. That's something that.
I'm sorry, can you restate that one?
Extra, the extra service, you stated that it could be within the two to three blocks within the boundaries that you are already servants, servicing. That's important. My biggest concern is just questions to, to consider. That's all. Forecast calls for the city in the next five years. I know right now we at 700, 750,000. It's important to budget in the future. Increased rate to individuals that do not live within the boundaries pick up bus stop. So what, going back to Councilmember Boyd and Councilmember Solomon, I know we're not within the boundaries throughout the city of Colleen, but we still have those bus routes, where we have the, the space where you can sit down and wait on the bus. Consider how much would it cost using the same service? I know it won't be a dollar fifty, but can we get it for $5? $8 to go through the whole city, as if it was an Uber? Just taking that under consideration. Don't need an answer now. And the other thing I wrote down, partnership with the colleges to see if they have funding and also the hospitals, see if they have funding that the city could partner with them to provide those routes because the airport is within the city budget. So those are not for answers now. But when you do come back, hopefully, we could meet, come back again. come back again during the budget. And we can really get into details with everything that you heard tonight in bringing back some results because what I'm getting from the council, they, all of them want to service the city as a whole, okay? And once again, we thank you all for coming, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the extra time.
You're welcome, sir. Madam Secretary. Oh, I'm sorry, here you go, Ms. Tangling. Who we have next?
Our next committee partner to present is Mr. Scott Connell from KEDC.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and give a little bit update on where we are and what we're doing. I guess, do we advance it here? Okay. Just a little bit, a few slides to give you what our presentation. I think you know we're a part of y'all, a part of the city, if you will, as a corporation. Three of the members here on council are members of the board. But our mission, if you're not familiar with the organization, is to promote the development of commercial industrial and manufacturing enterprises really throughout the community to encourage new investment, new employment, and overall improve the public welfare. A little bit of what, a little background for the last year and how things have gone over the course of this current fiscal year. As we, we've talked about before, and yes, I get to talk in depth on a quarterly basis to y'all, so we'll hit a quick. Dongjin Semi Chem, and their project that announced in the fall, they purchased some 40 acres, 42 acres in the industrial park, or Colleen Business Park. They are a supplier to Samsung. They plan 91,000 square feet as it stands right now. They've got the three buildings of steel up right now and are actually putting walls up on one of the buildings now. So moving very rapidly in this process to be up and operational by November of this year, let's just say the end of fourth quarter, it could be, you know, as it goes. We're very pleased to add what essentially is a second major supplier to Samsung, the operations in the Austin and Taylor areas as they grow. A third one is Harrington Industrial Plastics that moved into what was the 84 lumber facility in the park, existing structure. They are also a supplier to the Samsung facility in Taylor. As that grows, they do PVC pipe, but as a process pipe. The relevance of that project is the KEDC over the last year sold an acre and a half of land that is adjacent to their property campus, that they have future plans for growth. Nothing to announce right now, but our relationships with these companies and the use of the real estate that we have to assist in their development is a key part of what we do. And then a project that has taken on a building that also came available this year, Citizens Martin Emergency Group is moving into a facility, they're in renovations right now on a building on Roy J. Smith Drive and have plans, they'll have a formal announcement as they go through and finish up some of the work that's there, but really trying to, you know, as you hear, marketing and real estate are what drive what we do. And you'll hear kind of why that's important to the budget proposal. The current allocation that we've had for a few years is 725,054. Always curious how we get to $54, it's always fun. Well, our current request is 865, 865,000, that's additional $140,000, which we think aligns with the goals that we hope to be able to do is aggressively promote the market, the Colleen community to the broad American and international market so in a way that can maximize our opportunities for the different types of industry we can attract. We want to be able to leverage partnerships because they're our entities, and we'll talk a little bit about those that are already out there doing business on behalf of representing the state of Texas, and we want to make sure we're part of that and invest in those technical information that help us be prepared to respond to the kind of detailed information, real estate that support our real estate, and ultimately to be more responsive to the companies that are looking in Texas so that we can make sure that we're being considered for as many options as we can. How that, we see the additional funding, granted, we have marketing, we do some real estate already in our budgets. So we focus this conversation on really the additional funding and what that would be used for. The entities of the Texas Economic Development Corporation, which is a private entity separate from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, Team Texas both do different marketing on behalf of Texas. And participation with them, they set up the meetings, they do, it's like an extension of the organization's arm. They set up meetings with companies, they establish all of the details of how to set it up, of both client meetings, which is mostly what we see from Team Texas, and trade shows. And EDC really does a lot with the consulting industry that helps companies find locations for industries, some of the top folks in America, in the country, and then that gets us to certain markets. Our regional group of Grand Central Texas coordinates our own internal group team effort to tell our local story. Encore Electric Delivery actually has an economic development department that coordinates with their member communities, trade shows in key industries that we want to be a part of, and they do it at a very cost-effective basis for communities. And if we had to go and have our own trade show booth and set it all up ourselves, it's just an awful lot of work. And then Select USA, which takes us into the international market. They are, it is a program from the U.S. Department of Commerce that they host in Washington that allows us to connect with companies from throughout the world. They invite them to the United States and have a really key opportunity. The state, through the Team Texas and through the Governor's Office, courts, it's a booth to have us be there, but we all have to be participant through that system. And our goal is to really be at those, in those markets that have a lot of companies that are looking at Texas, in those Atlantas and New Yorks and Chicagos, San Franciscos, even in Dallas, because that's where a lot of the real estate community is and working through that and working those types of markets. What we also hope in this is also to do some good marketing materials with new photography, with some things that we really don't have on our fingertips now, with some materials we are, we do live in the electronic world and we're able to do a lot of stuff based on kind of putting it together, but having some newer updated materials that would allow us to target into some industries, give the broad information and update it on a pretty regular basis, but have some really first-class materials is something we want to be able to do. On the technical information side, let me make sure I did that right. Yeah, that's on our marketing side. The technical information, which is about half and half, we've talked about many times, real estate is a really key component of what we do. We own business park properties, we own both vertical and just land sites, but we are short on a lot of opportunities. So the ability to kind of look at new properties, take some time to do civil engineering reports in terms of site plans, infrastructure understandings, costs associated before we jump onto that. It's all the money you spend before you ever pull the trigger on whether you do anything, even in terms of buying it or even the stuff, the information that we have right now. And then some industry analysis as we go through and get more technical information. We were able to in those past years bring some folks who could help us do the analysis on a company and really communicate to y'all and to the community how it will impact our community. We think that's important. We've been to success utilizing folks like that, but it costs to be able to utilize those folks, those consultants. Really, again, all of that is to extend the expertise, staffing, the resources that we have and the two or three folks that actually work on behalf of economic development. These really would help us to extend our reach and take us to a situation that really would provide us a little bit more opportunities for the communities we go forward. So with that, I'll end and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. I do truly appreciate you and your staff, the way you broke down your budget request. That's very important, that transparency to the public, that 140,000 and exactly how you're going to spend it.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
You did have some, I provided you some printed material on how some of these costs I'll break down too.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully that's helpful.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next is Ms. Amy Yeager and Ms. Tammy Hayes from Bell County Health District. Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'ams.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. It's a wonderful to be here tonight. Want to introduce myself. I'm Amy Yeager. I'm the new Bell County Public Health District Director. I came to Texas February 7th of 2022, and I started at the Health District on Valentine's Day of 2022. I'm going to continue to say I'm the new Health Director until we get the modernization project finished.
Yes, ma'am.
So five years from now, I might still be saying that, but we're going to get there. So this is Tammy Hayes. She is our new Finance Director. She started in October of 2022. So we have a lot of changes going on at the Public Health District, and I have a real passion for what I do. And I obviously moved, I moved 12 hours away from where I'd been for 30 years in my career to come and do this and serve people who I didn't know because I love what I do. I got the calling to come, so here I am, so we're going to do what we can and do what we're called to do. We're going to keep it short tonight because I was told five slides and 10 minutes max.
Yes, ma'am.
And I talk really fast because I'm originally from the East Coast, so either keep up or tell me to slow down, I guess. Bell County Public Health is how we're rebranding the district because a lot of people don't know the difference between a district and a department. You'll see a big thing come out later this year with a new logo and all kinds of other things that we're doing to revitalize the Health District. So as you see Bell County Public Health, you'll see that that's how we're going to rebrand to be modern and look like a lot of the other health departments across the country. In Texas, the difference between a district and a department is that a department is ran by the county government and a district is an independent government agency. That's not necessarily how it's done in other states, but that's how we do it in Texas. I had to find that out. What do we do in public health? I guess I'm in charge of the clicker. I don't even know how to get it up there. I should not be the screen person. Oh, thank you. No, it's not up there.
Oh, then I can't help you with it.
Okay, there we go. So what is public health? There's a whole lot to public health, but in a nutshell, we are here to serve and protect the public's health. And how I explain it in classes I've taught, community presentations, is there's big picture PH, public health, and little picture PH, public health. Big picture, public health, pretty much everybody in this room and who has spoken so far is part of that. We all do something to serve and protect the public's health in some way, in our own way, if you think about it, all these people, fire, police, EMS, transit systems, elected officials, school teachers, daycare workers, food workers, everybody is somehow contributing to serving and protecting the public's health in some way. That's that big picture, public health. Little picture, public health, what I call it, little PH, that's us serving in a specific jurisdiction somewhere for that particular geographic area that you've been assigned. So we're assigned to Bell County, so we're not just responsible for every resident who lives here, which we're almost at 400,000, plus the comings and goings of Fort Hood, which we're not allowed to count those numbers, but we do service those folks, plus anyone who works here, plays here, or travels and passes through here. So we have a very large undertaking. Public health is a very small field globally, but as you've seen in the last three years, we have a very large responsibility to monitor and protect the health of all the people. And so I could go into lots of detail, but we'll move on. Bell County Public Health Growth. As I know you're aware, this county is growing at a very rapid pace. I know I'm new here, but my best friend and her husband came here 10 years ago this summer with Fort Hood, now Fort Cavazos. He was a Black Hawk pilot. She is part of the reason I'm here because she made me apply for the job. And God said, okay, so he sent me. And she's happy, and I'm still trying to figure it out. So I've watched this county grow in the 10 years that she's been here because I would come two or three times a year to visit. So I wasn't completely blind to where I was coming. I already knew the communities, at least from that perspective, and I liked them enough to come and help. What I've seen is the tremendous growth of the population here and the communities that are here. I've also seen a tremendous need that continues to grow. During our time at the Health District, I'm going to speak on behalf of Tammy and our whole new leadership team, we have uncovered a lot of practices that have not been done either correctly or efficiently or with any kind of accountability to some degrees at the Health District. The gift I was given is that the programs that have been ran over the years are all ran correctly with people that really know what they're doing and have a heart to serve. The operational side has needed a lot of work. And so the modernization is a lot different than I thought. A new logo is nice, but we're paying someone to do that. We have to do all the hard work on the backside. So we have that legal, moral, and ethical obligation to service all these folks. I'm a strong believer that we can't most greatly impact the community that we're here to serve if we can't get the operations and the foundation of what we're doing set. So that's what we've been working so hard to do, is as we've discovered things, we've made changes operationally. We, you know, put in a new payroll system, put in new procedures, wrote policies that hadn't existed, those kind of things. That's easy stuff. It might take a while, but at least I haven't had to change any kind of program. So I wanted you to know that that part is stable and steady. We're just really modernizing that inside piece that, I don't know, I guess you get so used to doing things, sometimes you forget to look at them and see if there's a new way to do it. So that's one of the growth pieces. Another growth piece really does have to do with the programs. Although Bell County Public Health has done an amazing job with the programs and services they've provided over the years, this community has grown entirely faster than the Health District has as far as the services and programs they're able to offer, either with the number of staff that are there or the resources that are available or the capacity that they had. So that's something that was identified. I've heard it from every level of staff since I walked in the door. Could we do this? Could we do that? We see a need for this, we see a need for that. So the staff see it because they're touching it. The community has voiced some things, plus just from a public health perspective, you know, I can analyze the data myself and talk to people in the community and hear it and see it too. So that's going to be a five and 10-year growth projectory of things we need to be doing. So for instance, right now we have about 100 employees. To cover a county of our size just residents, we should have 200 to 250 employees. So we're that understaffed already, and some of that's to even meet the basic things that we need to be doing. Nurses and sanitarians and health inspectors, we are way under the number of all of those of what we should have to even try to meet what we're currently doing, let alone what we need to do. All that new growth we keep talking about, all of that impacts our ability to serve the public's health too. So as we talk about growth, there's a lot of opportunity here, which was one of the big reasons I wanted to come and do this, is I wanted to be part of that. I wanted that opportunity to lead that growth for the organization and for the community. And so we're really excited about this. Sometimes the staff say, I push too fast, I move too fast, but that's okay because I get excited. They remind me when I need to slow down a minute. Want to talk about our divisions because we're currently, as we're looking at that infrastructure, we're reorganizing and renaming a few things. So Medical and Nursing was what the Nursing Division's been called. That's a term that's been around since the 60s in public health. The new modern name for it is Clinical Services and Systems. So we've recently changed the name of the division to Clinical Services and Systems to put the emphasis on the services that we provide. Public health is not meant to be the doctor's office or the replacement of it. We're there on the clinical side to help fill those gaps for folks that need those gaps filled on a clinical basis for certain pieces that we can help control bigger issues that help, that happen in the community that are going to impact the individual and the community's health, economics, you know, thriving hood, school truancy, there's all kinds of reasons why there are certain clinical pieces in a public health department that help to fill those gaps. The systems piece is, there's a whole lot of things in modern-day public health nursing that we want to touch, that we just haven't had the capacity to touch. We've hired a new director for this division. She started two weeks ago. She's amazing, and she really has a good vision for what she wants to do to modernize and expand the service piece, but also then to grow a whole system side of what we should be doing and monitoring from the nursing and the clinical side of public health. The next one is Environmental Health. That's a division that's been kind of together and then siloed and together from my understanding of the history of it. I'm bringing it back together. We do, we do a lot of, we do the restaurant inspections and the sewer, and those are the two main programs that have been in Environmental Health. There are a whole lot of other environmental health issues that we desperately need to be addressing right here in Bell County. We've got some staff in that division that have started to recognize that and started taking steps forward. One of the things that happened was this spring, we wrote forward, received a national grant from NACHO, the National Association of City and County Health Officials. It was a $10,000 grant for six months to be a mentee to Williamson Cities and Counties Health Department to start a vector surveillance program for Bell County. So it was a startup grant. So it was a startup grant, but we were only one of two mentees awarded it in the country. So that was kind of a big deal. So that's our first step toward creating a vector program for Bell County. There's a whole lot of things that go along with vector and environment. There's also climate things that are going to come about, and there's water. There's all kinds of things that we need to touch. So we're just starting to vision and dream of that as we have all these folks coming in from, as they said, Samsung and Tesla and just people moving into this area. Do you realize over 10,000 people moved into Bell County in 2020? Those people were moving. In 2020, Bell County increased population by 10,000 people. To me, that says a lot for what is bringing people to Bell County that in that first year of the pandemic, people were moving here and putting down roots here. So those are just some things that then affect, you know, sewer and restaurant inspections and things like that because we pretty much need to double that staff alone just to try to keep up with the pace of growth here in this county. Emergency preparedness. Let me tell you, one of my grad school professors told us a long time ago, nobody knows what public health is and nobody pays attention to it until there's a problem, and then what they do is criticize it, even though they don't know what it is, didn't know what it was, and then they criticize it. And I think everybody just saw that with the pandemic. And emergency preparedness, I don't think people realize that we've had a big girl seat at the table since 9/11 happened, but we do, and that's something that we need to really grow and expand quickly in this county. We have a lot of targets here in Bell County, and we have growing targets in Bell County. And most people don't realize it, but Public Health is the lead responder for C-Burn, which is chemical, radiological, biological, nuclear, and explosive events, plus pandemics. And so we've got a whole lot of work to do, both internally and externally, to get us and the community ready just in case. We always hope it doesn't happen, but we sure want to be ready when it does. WIC, our WIC program is huge, and it's growing, and it got an award last year for a mid-level WIC program for customer service, for top customer service awards. That was exciting. But what we found is even though we've got really high WIC participation numbers, we still are way underserving the number of people in this county that qualify for WIC. So that just speaks to the need here in Bell County to me of the economics and what people need because that's a specific program line that's specifically there to help certain people with certain, what do you call it, income requirements and other kinds of things going on. And other things that we do are for absolutely everybody. It's all for everybody ultimately. But that's a more specific lined program, and we still are, have a lot of people we haven't serviced there. And we continue to try to figure out, how can we find those folks? How can we let them know the service is here to help and support them? This Health District has never had a Community Health Division, which was super surprising to me considering that's my background. And I started a Community Health Division in 2000 at my old health department. So I was really surprised by that. I have been fortunate to be able to do that here in Bell County. That was one of the three asks that the Board of Health asked for when they first appointed me. And we have six health educators. We are currently seeking a Director of Community Health. We're going to take the good work that was already done, particularly from the Nursing Division and from the WIC Division with their community pieces that they were working on and see what we can do to expand that, grow that. There's all kinds of strategic ways that you can do things in the community. We'll have multi-level community approaches someday, so we're going to continue to build on a foundation that was already here and, and just, just really be a lot more visible in the community and have accessibility to the community to data and programming in a different way by having more staff doing it in a broader way. The last one then is the Administration Division. We're the boring ones because we have to do the paperwork and the policies and process the bills and all that stuff. So. So I was asked about finances. And keeping it brief on this one, ours will probably look a lot more like the hop the next time we come because as I said, we were exploring things and I'll mention that here before we're done. Currently, Bell County Public Health has a $14.3 million operating budget, which is actually a pretty fair budget, if not a low budget for a county this size for a health department. For FY '23, the City of Colleen's contribution was $363,403. And if you do the math, that's .025% of that total. That's it. Which is great for now. However, some of the things that we've found as we've discovered things is the multipliers that were formally used were missing part of the equation. So the math really doesn't seem to have been done correctly for a while, from what I can tell from looking through the, 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 is that a fair way to say that?
The math doesn't match.
The math doesn't match. How about that? And us and the board have tried to figure it out, and that's what we determined. We've also, as you see further down, we are going to be rewriting our cooperative agreement. The last time one was signed in Bell County that we can find on record was 1994. That was 30 years ago. It needs revisited. Bless you. There are a lot of things in the current cooperative agreements that don't really belong in a cooperative agreement, and there are things that are missing that are required in the state statute. The way the funding is listed in the state statute is nowhere close to how ours is done in Bell County. Tammy and I have already started talking about some different options to propose and to look at. And I've already started to talk to the State Association of City and County Health Officials about talking to the state legislature eventually to modernize the state statute because it, it needs a little bit of tweaking. And what they have in for the finances is also kind of excessive. I don't know anybody that's going to do what's in there. So at some point, what our contribution ask might change. It will change here, probably for the next year. So FY '24 remained the same because we hadn't had a chance to go through and really work out what should the new cooperative agreement look like? What should the funding look like? But as you can tell, with our requirement to service everybody in this county, whether people pay for it or not, someone's got to, we still have to do it. We can't not respond. So at some point, we really have to scrub down and see what does this really look like structurally and operationally and figure out what it should, what it should really be. So just trying to modernize again stuff that we're finding as we go. But for FY '24, it's going to remain that same amount that you have for FY '23. But when we come back for FY '25, we'll have a whole different discussion. Like I said, it'll, it'll be longer. And we'd love to come back and talk to you about public health or the, the ideas that we have for new budgets or any of that, anytime that you want. So go ahead.
I was going to say, the other thing I will say about the, the other thing I will say about the contribution is that it, it's remaining the same in FY '24. It has remained the same over the last two years for sure. And before that, it was just a minor tweak in the number. So it's not something that's been.
Since 2010, it's been about the same.
Since 2010, it's been about the same amount. So, I mean, we all know how inflation has affected us in our personal lives. So, you know, imagine trying to take care of 400,000, you know, constituents and/or patients at the same time on the same budget. So just know that that's coming in the future, probably FY '25, definitely FY '26.
So let's talk about next steps so that you can see some of what else is coming and then one is the countywide community health assessment. And this is something that I would love to come back and invite the council and anybody else in Colleen and these community partners that we've been talking to to participate. We're going to do a countywide community health assessment. So the hospitals here you're familiar with that they've had to do one because it's an IRS regulation every three years for us, for them. In public health, it's every five years. And it's for the entire county. Hospitals are required to do their jurisdiction. Health departments are required to do, to do their jurisdiction, which is for us, the whole county. I have led five of these before, so I'm very well-versed and adept at doing this and done trainings and all kinds of other stuff. So we're real excited. We've already done an informal assessment process. We kicked off the official assessment process about two weeks ago. We have our next meeting again next week. During this, this next phase, this is where there's going to be a lot of community engagement. And since I don't have a timeline currently for it, because you usually do have a timeline, but we've never done one. So I can take as long or as short a time as, as we need to get this right and find out all we need. We'll have a survey, a community survey to go out to be distributed, and we would appreciate everybody's help getting that out. We're also going to run a series of focus groups. And we have at least two colleges that are going to offer students to help us run these focus groups, as well as community partners, as well as some of our staff. So we want to do them with stakeholders, community stakeholders, with elected officials. And I've never gotten to do this part, but I'm super excited. Since we don't have a timeline, I want to do it with community citizens. You know, we've always gotten our feedback from surveys in the past ones I've done, but I've never had a chance to do, to do town halls or, well, we've done town halls, but not for this. So I want to do town halls and focus groups with the citizens too to hear what they say. Instead of having to just rely on what the stakeholders say they're hearing, I just want to hear from them too to just see if their perspectives match. It's just another data analysis thing that can help support the data even stronger or show us what we're missing or that the perceptions are off from the providers to the, to the recipients. So there's going to be a lot of that over the next six months to a year, I would imagine, that we're going to take to do all of that. So we're super excited and want all kinds of feedback with all of that. And the new analysis epidemiology software we're getting also has a video component, and we might try that too, to allow people a chance to do videos and send them in because some people don't want to sit in a group and participate. Some, you know what I mean? Different people want different interactions, and it's modern, and you can do it from your phone. So I think we might give that a try too and then just hope they're appropriate. The next thing is 81-year celebration. So the Health District was started in 1942 as a result of the, you know, United States military wanting to turn camp hood into fort hood. And so that's a pretty exciting history for the Health District here to have that the need was because there were going to be barracks, and they needed a health district to be here to monitor for disease among the soldiers. So we missed the 80 years last year because I was new and things were changing, and it was November, and I was like, ooh, we missed an anniversary opportunity. I'll admit that I, I missed that. So we decided that we were going to do an 81-years-forward opportunity, and so you'll see a lot of activity around that. There's several staff that are working on some internal celebrations with our staff as well as external celebrations with the community and open houses and announcement of the logo and all of that as part of this, as part of this exciting endeavor. And that's when we'll start to kick off too, those community focus groups and things to get people really to own it because the people are the public that's in public health. And the pandemic, for a lot of us in public health, reminded us that the people are the public in public health. And so I want to do all we can to continue to engage folks so that they know the story. Public health is not good at telling our story. We're good at doing our job. We're not good at telling our story or telling people what we're doing. So we want to get better at that. I mentioned about rewriting the cooperative agreement, which will include the review and revision of some of the funding options. We've, we've got three or four ideas on the table that we're playing around with, and we're open to looking at more ideas. So we really want to thoroughly look at what are the best options before we ever start presenting anything to our board or to any of the municipalities because we want to get it right and hopefully set a model because there's other health districts in Texas that I've spoken with that are going through the exact same thing. They have cooperative agreements. There's a lot of health districts in Texas that haven't looked at their cooperative agreements in 20 to 30 years, who haven't looked at their funding base in that long, who haven't, who haven't revised it. So we're all kind of talking and working together to say, hey, we tried this. How about this? Did you see this? So, so it was good to know that we aren't the only ones. There's quite a few of us doing the same kind of things at the same time. And so anytime that you would like to hear more about what public health does or specific areas of it, I'll be glad to come back. I'll send any of my staff. Most would be okay with it. Some are a little shy, but they would still come. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Tammy, before we give it back to the mayor?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. Mayor?
Thank you. I have just two questions. My first question, after 14.3 million, your budget, who else contribute to that? Do you also receive state and federal funding?
Of the 14.3 million, probably 90% or better is state and federal funding, which is great, except grants can come and go, and that's not how you want to run a business. And at the end of the day, it is a business. So we, that's one of the reasons that we've got to go back and look at the cooperative, cooperative agreement and figure out how to rewrite things. So as of right now, City of Colleen, City of Temple, City of Belton, Salado, Harker Heights, all of the major cities. Yeah, there's 12, 12 to 14 cities, and then Bell County itself all contribute. But again, the contribution doesn't, like I said, 90% of our funding is federal and state grants.
So the amount that the City of Colleen contribute to your budget, that's based on our population?
To be honest with you, to go back and look at the formulas from how it was calculated back in the 80s, I couldn't honestly tell you. It's, and that's why it hasn't changed over, that's why it has never changed very much over the years. They might have put a 1% or a 2% add-on into it. But to be able to tell you what, what it was based on back then, I cannot. Only thing I can do is assure you that going forward, when we come back and say, okay, here's, here's what we need, here's what we should be, here's what we believe your portion may be or how we need you to contribute. Believe me when I say when I come back, I'll have every single bit of the data to show you and say, okay, it's based on these numbers for this amount, for this many people, for however long. And so, yeah, answering questions about how, how things were calculated and done before I got there is challenging.
Would that, would there be an updated formula? Are we going back with same one 1980? How would, how would you determine?
No, the state of Texas has a lot of regulations, I guess, for lack of a better word to put it, on how cooperative agreements should be written and how that should all be funded. The one thing I've found since starting here is that some of the other health districts, for instance, Galveston County is the most similar to Bell County as far as size, population. And they have been fantastic. Williamson County, McLennan County, just being able to reach out to them and say, okay, show me how you're doing it. Show me how you're calculating it. Show me how everybody's, you know, how you've got everything written. And so what I've had the luxury of being able to do is taking the best of what everybody has to offer and trying to put that together to be the best thing for Bell, be the best, be the best package for Bell County.
And that's based on state guidelines?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Bo, do you have a question? Any other council member? All right. Thank you, Bo.
I'm sorry, just as a follow-up to answer the rest of your question. Mayor, the, the current municipalities collectively are contributing a little over $881,000 of the 14.3 million. So if that also helps with that particular part of the picture.
And the City of Colleen carries the largest amount.
I don't know. I'd have to have the list in front of me, but I would think the 363 out of the 881, it's a pretty sizable amount of it, but in, in relation to the overall budget.
You have some much smaller municipalities that are, that are contributing as well. Rogers, Holland, Salado. You know, so yeah, Temple, Belton, Colleen, those would be the,
In Bell County.
In Bell County, yeah. Those would be the four major contributors.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Bo.
Thank you for having us tonight.
For their presentation. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Now we have a, a next presenter is Mr. Clarence Enix from National Mountain Warfare Foundation.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We've spoken a few times, and I have 10 minutes and five slides. And I will, I will honor you with some complete information. This is an update, as many of you know, from an MOU that was signed September 16th of 2019 that then Assistant City Manager David Ellison and I spent about nine months developing so we would get it right. And that benefited both ourselves, as the foundation, the, the city, and identified the purpose of, of the funds that were allocated for this purpose. So the MOU expressed, it was first devotop between the fiscal year 19 and 20, and this would be the last year of the allocation, and we would be welcome to come back to look at this. And, and we have a thorough presentation based upon the MOU and that we would intend to do to wrap up the total opportunity of the five years. But through that MOU that was signed by Mr. Olson at that time, it would reimburse the foundation up to $80,000 per year for process. There, there are some statute, I won't bore you with the Texas Tax Code, but there's some very stringent regulations on the use of hotel occupancy tax funds. And we identified one that worked for a purpose. It was to enhance and promote tourism, the convention and hotel industry. So we have done that, and I think we've done that very well. And I think I'll, I'll show you some of the ways. some of the ways that we've done it in the slide. This is our beautiful building. If any of you haven't been able to come out for an event, I welcome you to contact me, and we would love to give you a tour. Some of the events that we've been able to do there are going to start getting smaller and less frequent, and I'm going to give you a date for that very reason here in a minute. This is the location, and I'll show you the location because this adds to some of the values. So the U.S. Army provided about 17 acres for the development of this project. A lot of the research that went into where this should actually be placed, it should actually be placed, I think, at, at the end, and some of the general shoemaker and some of those that were really vested in, into doing this over about a 20-year period of thought, they, they thought it should be on post, on, on the spot where the men and women who bear the cloth of our country spend most of their time, because our number one purpose as a museum is to educate soldiers about the history. So it's right by the place that sometimes we all just kind of cringe when we have to go on bases, go by the visitor center, and there are some very wonderful people there. And I got my pass the other day, and it took me all of five minutes. But we are adjacent to the visitor center in the First Cavalry detachment. Why that is exciting to us is the fact that the First Cavalry Division gives us a living history presentation. They've started doing full rehearsals on Thursday. The museum group that is actually taking over and will run the museum under Mr. Steve Draper, they've actually been doing open houses during that, so you can kind of see how the whole, whole development will work out there. But 101 Trooper Loop is the address. I'm going to show you this because a lot of, a lot of what we're able to do with this dollar is to really add to this value, but this economic impact. So you may have heard me talk about this. I helped marshal a study or, I am a fundraising consultant, so I developed some funds that we were able to replicate or redo a study that Lord Cultural Services did in 2011. When I came on staff with the foundation, I noticed that some of the, the data was old. Some of it, and by those numbers and just a basic look at things, I thought that the number could potentially be higher, but, but I didn't know. We were able to contract with an independent, very valued research component, which is UCARE, the University Center for Applied Research and Engagement at Texas A&amp;M University Central Texas. And after about nine to 10 months, we were able to get some new numbers. So these are very significant, because during a few there, bless you, during some of the other presentations, I've heard that there's, there's nothing that brings people here to this area. So this, this, we believe, is a very genuine tourism and product and way to promote this area and the value that the people that live there. So if you look, and this is basic math, they found that 377,417 will visit on average. If you look at this type of research, there's what they call a leveling year, which you'll have excitement that generates, they've indicated that there will be, they anticipate there will be no leveling year. So you're going to have about 370,000 people in, in your community per year, which is what, about 1,000, a little over 1,000 a day, new visitors. Look at that per week and then per month. So our, our economic impact is based upon a high and a low number. I've, I looked for the lowest number, and I looked for a number from the governor's office, and the key is the longer that you keep them to stay, what do they do? They spend more money, they visit more places, it's better time for, for them to be engaged, and we want them to become citizens of our own communities. We don't want them to go back home. We want to make this their home. So this, this becomes a product by which we're able to, to showcase our, our communities locally and regionally, and regionally means, means all of us. So with that, that in mind, we've kind of roughly calculated some of the values that we've been built into, to the monies that we have sought reimbursement from, from the city. And I want to say that we really appreciate the ability to, and some of the, just the moments that I've had with people based upon being able to communicate with them about the museum that I wouldn't have, hadn't experienced, that they'll, they'll be with me the rest of my life. But I wanted to let you know that in fiscal year 2022, we requested reimbursement, we received reimbursement at $53,193 and some change. And at the date that this report was prepared, we had submitted reimbursements for $28,481 and some change. So the, the large majority of that, those monies go for the development of vinyls for billboards, because we currently have about 375 billboards around the country through Texas, Louisiana, Georgia, Alabama, Washington, DC, and things of that nature. A lot of people always ask, how do you have all those, how did you come to have all those billboards? And, and the time, we're not paying for any of that time. The, the individuals that own those companies are providing that time free based upon the development of vinyls and then the opens and some of the digitals. If you've seen some of the digital billboard presentations here locally, those are at no cost. Those cost nothing, and we don't seek reimbursement for those. But one of our marketing consultants and our vice president were able to go to the Independent Billboard Operators Convention in Kansas City. The city did reimburse them for those, for the flights to that, and they were able to meet one pretty significant individual, is Mr. John Murrow, who's the head of Trailhead Media. He provides us regularly 150 digital boards and 50 static boards. And he uses some of the names on there of the individuals that are honored, of people that he served with, and some that didn't make it home. And that's, that, that makes him feel good, and we get that value back. So if you look roughly at what, what that might cost, or when I talk about this last little bullet on there, that we generate between $250,000 to $350,000 in advertising a month that the City of Colleen's name is on, that's actually pretty low, because that's, that's at under $1,000 a billboard. Depending on, billboards are relative to a number of things, location, number of times that they're viewed, and then not just viewed, but there's an impression, what makes you think to follow up on those. And some of those can run for as much as $15,000 a month, so. But I, I believe in, in shooting for the low number to, to be absolutely honest, because it can be all over the place, but there is such a wide range in that. So that, that is at least, you know, that's a significant number, I think, that we would just not be able to do. Another thing that we do that, that has been very, that people have commented a lot on, we do contract with a company called Certified Folder Services, so they place our rack cards in 127 visitor centers up and down the, the larger corridors, up into Waco, Temple Area, I-45, and the Texas and Oklahoma border. So, and, and they also have a digital component that they develop where you can go and look at the actual rack card and the types of things that are being displayed there. But that's been very neat, because when people call, they'll call and ask if it's, if the building's open yet, or they might drive out to the office and be disappointed because it's not open yet. Well, we're, we're working on that too, so. So our future use of the funds is to continue with the website, advertising, television, marketing, any, any opportunity that we can that honors the intent of the MOU. Some of our, some of the, I get calls, or the office gets calls a lot from, from Alabama. Mobile, Alabama, we have boards and write down on the drag. And we're going to start transitioning some directional signage and advertising, because I want to let you know that on November 8th, that building will be open. It'll be open, it will be fully involved, and those that you have, that have gone over the visit, you know there are about 12 vehicles in there. During July and August, you know, I can be, I've had a lot of events in there, because we're going to be creating the dioramas around there. Not me individually, but the groups will come in that will create those dioramas so that we, on November 8th, we can open it for everybody and, and really provide the gift. But on Thursdays, remember there, there are open houses there, and there will be invitations going out. But Thursdays, remember the open house where you can look out and you can view, you could view the horse cab detachment as, as they perform. And we do have, I am, am one of those guys, I'm not afraid to ask people for things, and I'm really involved in a lot of things, and one of the things I've gotten involved with is back my alma mater. We've been hosting some individuals from Samsung and some from the semiconductor industry. We do bring people in, we're having, hosting the entire Texas A&amp;M University System Sentry Council in partnership with Texas A&amp;M University Central Texas, so they'll have a, a day out there. So those are some significant individuals in, that we'll be having in the community. But the most significant are, are those whose names are on those bricks and those lives that we honor in that building. And in, and finishing up, that we'll, we'll continue to replenish and evaluate the materials for Certified Folder Service, so if that gets stagnant, we might try a different area, we might try and expand it, but once we get, get a package any larger, it almost doubles in price. And, and we want to, I think we've been very litigious in the way that we spent this money, because we have by the MU up to $80,000, and we don't rush, because we have two weeks left to find a purpose to do it, so. And then we're going to work with the airport. We do have advertising out at the airport, but we want to develop some, we've talked about some convention kiosks that would have shared messages of the city message and our message. And then there are always opportunities that come up, ideas that come up that, that we don't know about yet, so. That is all I have, and I hope I made my 10 minutes, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. So if I understood you correctly, the MOU is getting ready to expire.
Yes, ma'am. This will be the last year of, of the MOU, I believe, of 2024.
Correct. So the question I have, I didn't see an amount that you're requesting from the city for your budget.
Well, we, we don't typically do that, because ours is based on a reimbursement, as the MOU establishes a limit of $80,000 that we're able to request reimbursement for. So we'll, I send, we send quarterly reports, we send monthly invoices of any expenditures, and then city staff evaluates and make sure that they fit the scope of the MOU before any reimbursement is provided.
So the MOU that is, will be running out next year.
Yes, ma'am.
You'll come back to the council to renew that MOU for another year?
Yes, ma'am.
And that $80,000 includes the marketing, transportation, flying in and out?
No, ma'am. That just, that, 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 all that $80,000, those are hotel occupancy tax funds. So we don't, we're not asked, we're asking what the, if we ask for a continuation of the MOU, it's just up to that. We don't, we might not find anything that fits that, that parameter that we can use to submit for reimbursement. So we're asking for, or we would be asking for next year, a limit or a, a reimbursement up to a, a certain point. And as I said, we've not, we have not sought reimbursement of the full amount in any year that we have undertaken this marketing process.
Right. I do understand that $80,000 is within what we already discussed in that prior MOU. So you're coming back, I guess my question is, when you open in November, you would like to continue the MOU with the City of Colleen when it expires?
When it expires, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. No, sir, I was just writing down a note. So Councilmember Boyd, is your hand up to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Can you still hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you good.
Okay. I apologize I wasn't available for the, to make a comment on the previous item. I'll probably be in and out here. My question is, was it the city's intent originally to engage a second MOU when, though the museum is going to be open? It was always my understanding that it would go up to the point of the museum opening. Am I incorrect?
As far as I know, it was to do through the five, four years, I wasn't involved in the discussions with city staff. I know Councilman Segarra was, was mayor at the time and may have more input on some of the city's discussion that occurred out, without me. But the intent was to market and get as many of those people to stay as long as they can to, to basically, you know, shorten kind of the, the idea.
Okay. Yeah, it's just my thinking that I'd like to see the results of all the marketing and see if then we need to continue to put funds into promoting the museum. I, I believe it's going to be successful. I'm out of time now, and I was talking to someone who's promoting museums or something today, you know, just like I talk about Colleen, and it sounds like folks are getting excited about this, the existence of it. I know we're already supporting, but I do have a concern about continuing to put funds into this once it's open, and we're seeing, you know, traffic coming in, but that's just me. That's all I got. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Any more questions? Sir, when do the MOU expire?
Um, I can, I should be able to pull it up. It says through, effective through the end of fiscal year 2024.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
All right.
Welcome back.
Thank you, ma'am. Last but not least, we have Mr. Billy White and Ms. Tammy Hovnick from the Tax Appraisal District. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmen and women. Thank you for having us out today. I appreciate it. We'll try and be as short, and you can stop me at any time, so. I just want to come out and tell you guys what the appraisal district's doing. I'm sure you all have seen the notices that go out each year, is our duty to do by the tax code, to send out the values and such, and tell you a little bit about what the appraisal district does, remind you of what the budget and amount that goes towards the appraisal district that comes from the cities. This is just a basic overview of who we are. We have a board of directors, and that is who appoints the chief appraiser and approves our budgets and some other big decisions. Of course, we are, we have each one's appointed by different cities and school districts. We have your appointee, Mr. Dick Young. He is the, who is appointed by the city, is currently serves on our board of directors, and he is here in the audience to answer all the questions that need to be answered. So just give you a couple of the basics about appraisal districts that are sometimes not always remember, we do have to appraise things as of market value each year based on what we see, what's going on in the market. We are not part of the county, we are not part of the city, not part of the school districts. We are required to praise at market value each year, and then, of course, what our values are, help determine the taxes that are collected based on the tax rates that you and other entities set each year. Oh, that's working. So I'm going to skip through some of these slides to keep it short. There we go. So how the appraisal district is governed, of course, like we said, the city, citizens of Bell County elect you, and then you appoint a board of directors, who then appoints myself, and I run the appraisal district. These are just phases in the property tax cycle. There we go. So how the appraisal district is governed, of course, like we said, the citizens of Bell County elect you and then you appoint a Board of Directors who then appoints myself and I run the appraisal district. These are just phases in the property tax cycle. Our appraisal year starts each year in August and that's when generally we start doing reappraisals for the next year, go out and measure all the new improvements that are out there, all the new houses that are being built here in Colleen and Temple and other places in the county. We come back in the beginning of the year and do our field work or appraisal of all the values of the sales that have come in to get our notices out as soon as possible at April 1st or soon thereafter, to then be able to give everybody the opportunity to come and discuss with those their values and any issues they may have with the evaluations we were performing at that time, to then get all those protests through our process by July 20th to approve the appraisal records, to turn over to you, the city, and to determine your tax rates that are going to be set based off the budgets that you're working on currently. So just tell you about a little of the customer service we've been providing. The last two years, we've provided this trifold and our notices really to help people understand what the homestead really does currently. Obviously, there's some legislation out there and some special sessions have been set. And what those will do is, is we will find out once those have done. But currently, things that people forget about are the big benefits of the homestead. And one of them is, of course, is that you have a $40,000 valuation off of your school taxes or off your school valuation. But the other one is the homestead cap. And because values have increased so rapidly in these last couple of years with the market here in our county, many properties have had a homestead cap. And what that means is it will only go up 10% more than what it was last year. Assess that. If it goes up more than that, that's what the market value will be set at. But the homestead cap protects a lot of people from going up, at least as big an increase as what we've seen in the market this past couple of years. I'm sorry. I'm pressing this thing once and it's going way more than one time. So just say, talking about some of the customer service that we provide, we do give customer service surveys to everybody that comes into our door, including during the times of when people are unhappy with values and paying taxes. For a service that most people aren't happy to actually pay for, taxes and such, usually our job is, for my staff, is to try and educate the public as to what they're doing and how we're doing it and to let them know how we got to those things. So you can see, even though not everybody may not be as happy when they come in, after leaving, you can see 95% to 97%, 98% all thought they had excellent or good service when they came in, that we were doing a good job and that we were answering their questions in an efficient manner and that we actually showed them knowledge regarding that information. It's important to know because I know generally you don't always hear from the good we're doing, obviously just those that are not as satisfied with evaluations or the taxes that are, that come thereafter. Some of the projects that we have done over this past couple of years to help make our tax role and appraisal role here in the county and the city of Colleen more equitable, more fair are some aerial projects that we engage with each year. Eagle View, a company that provides aerials each year. And the second product below, they're called Change Finder. Each year we'll go in, look at what properties have changed from the year before. So we'll look at a photo from one year and a photo to the next. And if somebody builds a, an addition to their house, it will notify us that there's a change in that property. So we do that every year to make sure we keep our appraisal role as accurate as possible. And then, of course, Sketch Check is a project that we undertook, first time ever doing it here. And what it did is it took our drawings that we had currently in our system of each property, set them on top of that aerial photo and told us if anything was wrong or if our drawing was incorrect. So it could have caught issues with drawings or properties that could have been there forever since before the existence of appraisal districts or even for the past couple of years. So, and these projects aren't necessarily just about making sure that they pay for themselves when it comes to how much they cost, but it's also about making sure we're more accurate and fair. So for instance, if a house sold in your neighborhood and it sold for a lot more than everything else and it has a pool on it, but we, the appraisal district, don't know that it has a pool, we may think the whole neighborhood should increase by $40,000 or $50,000 or whatever it may be. If we know that it has that information or know that it has those characteristics, we won't raise the whole neighborhood. We want to be accurate and fair. But you can see with these projects, the Sketch Check, Pool Finder, Change Finder, they cost us about $330,000 this last year. And the estimated value we added for the one year was $174 million in value at a 2.5% tax rate. For the first year, it was about $4.35 million in taxes, an estimated return of 1,300%. And of course, all those properties, all those additions to those properties, they're on the tax roll and their appraisal roll for every year thereafter. So this is, they're free each year thereafter. So we're doing things to be fair and accurate as the tax code presents to us, but also the projects we're doing are more than paying for themselves, too. Just to let you know how we are graded, what I like to say is that we are probably one of the most audited government entities in the state of Texas. We are audited each year by property owners when we turn in our values to show everybody what we're doing and how the values came out and let them have the opportunity to come before us, talk to our staff, and then go before an appraisal view board if they are unsatisfied at that point. We're also audited by a financial audit by auditors. We're also audited for a stock audit each year. And then every other year, we are audited by the property, the tax, the Texas State Comptroller. They do what we call a Methods and Assistance Program, which determines if we are following all the operations of tax code. As you can see, our last one, we did in 2022, we passed all questions and met each question with 100%. So according to the Comptroller during our last review, we're doing everything exactly as the tax code requires us to based on that review. And then, of course, in the odd years, we do a property value study. This year, we will, the Comptroller will perform a property value study, determining if our values are within 95% to 105% of what they think it would sell for. And of course, we have to stay within 100% or right at 100%. If we fall too far above or below, the school districts have a possibility of losing funding. And that's the difference. As of last year in 2021, we did fail Temple ISD initially. We went out and appealed it to the state, told them we didn't believe in what their evaluations were, showed them proven explanations. And those aren't always successful, but the one for Temple ISD last year was successful and we were able to get it passing, keeping it from losing millions of dollars in funding from the state. So to our budget this year, some of the things that we're requesting in our budget that was passed last month for the Board of Directors, the big things that we're looking for really is for increase in personnel. As you know, as the market and everything is changing here in the county, that increases our workload. And we have done over the last few years, done our best to increase efficiencies in every place we can find. And there's a point in time where we just have to have more people to do the work. You can see every time lots are drawn for all these subdivisions, for these, all the people that they were talking about have moved to the county over this last two years, they have to have a house. They're drawing lots. We have to draw each one of those out in our system. We have to have a deed for each one. More exemptions get filed. We measure every single new improvement. We measure more new houses this year than we've ever measured, 3,500 new houses this last year. So just shows some of the workload that's changed in just one year. This is just how our budget compares to other appraisal districts of similar sizes throughout the state. What's to note here is that this is what their 21 budgets. We don't know what their budgets are for this current coming year. And appraisal districts, as we are one of the largest ones to do the collections for the, for as appraisal districts. Most collections that counties this size are done by the tax offices. You can see other ones here in the black, the Lubbock and Midland, they're the only other ones that actually perform collections. These other appraisal districts that we're still providing a cheaper cost per parcel, don't even provide the collections, the tax rate calculations, the full service throughout the whole year. And just to show you where our cost per levy has gone over the past couple of years. Obviously, it's stayed fairly flat as the market value and the levy, how much taxes the county, the city, the school districts have collected or we've collected for you. After you've levied it, we've still kept our cost per dollar of levy down under that $500. Just to give you an idea of what's going on, obviously, we're in our protest season right now. This has statistics from last few years. But as you can see, as the months of inventory have gone down and the real estate market down dramatically, it's right about the time our market really starts to take off when we start to increase values. And of course, as we increase values, protests increase because increased values could possibly mean increase in taxes. So last year, we were at 24,000 if you included our walk-ins and our, our walk-in inquiry period. This year, we're probably sitting at about 24,000, 25,000. We're almost unprocessed to most of them at this point. So we're going to probably increase over what we were last year, but not too much. And we got to get through all those protests through, by July 15th, we have to have 95% of the value not under protest to be able to turn it over to you and the other cities in the, in the county. This just gives some information of what others were saying about the market. Once we sent out the information of our values, it wasn't just us saying Texas Real Estate Center, months of inventory. Obviously, it's up from where it was last year, but still, at least as of January 1st, the market was still doing really well, still well under a stable market. What's to come next year? That's what we'll see when we can look at the sales information that comes out next January. Each year, we're trying to reflect what happened in the market over the prior year and not what's currently going on. City of Colleen, this just shows what kind of, what went on with your appraisal data after we got done doing our evaluations this year. Market value in billions, you can see went from 12.76 to 14.89. This is, of course, with increase in reappraisals of all the existing properties and, of course, all the new property that was added to the tax roll. The average home value of A1 properties went from 197 to 221,000 for City of Colleen. And of course, this shows you the average value of the new homes and how many new homes were put in different cities. So you can see you're a second there at TKI, that's the city of Colleen. 500 new houses were put in the city of Colleen and the average value of those houses was $329,000. You can see how you compare it to the other cities and what kind of product that is be putting in, in those cities. Interesting information to tell you what else is being done in your city. Current value exempted. I know it's a hot topic issue, how much value is being exempted off the tax rolls each year. This just shows you how much more has increased each year. And obviously, even if you don't get any new exemptions each year, you're always going to, if the value is increasing, you're going to lose more off the tax rolls. Because if that house was 100% exempt last year at $100,000 and now it's $120,000, that's $120,000 versus $100,000 last year. So there'll be more taken off that tax roll each year. You never had it to begin with, but now it's even more that's being exempted. So you can see that number has grown quite a bit over this last few years. And of course, total exempts and charities do a lot in DV and DVSS and the surviving spouses and such has really grown over the past couple of years for City of Colleen and other cities in the, in the county. This is the last slide I have here is just talking about what has actually changed in your taxable value. So last year, your certified value was $9.3 million. And this year, we're estimating, which is an estimate now because we haven't finished through our certification yet, but $10.8 million. And you can see off to that far graph, to the far right, the dark one is showing you how much difference in taxable value, that 1.5 billion. The light blue is existing value and the red is the new improvement value. So how much value of that 1.5 was new value is that, is that small red slide there. So that shows you the change in total taxable value for the city of Colleen for this last year.
Thank you, sir. Council, Mayor Protem called.
Sir, thank you for your report. I, in your report, you mentioned the hiring of others that you needed to continue to do such a great job. Is that asking us for more money or is that money you have budgeted with the money that you receive?
So the way the budget works for the city of Colleen and all the entities and for appraisal district is we determine our budget. The Board of Directors approves that budget. They have to approve it before June 15th. They approved it last month on May 8th or 9th, I believe it was. And once that budget's approved, it gets allocated out to all the cities, the school districts, the MUDs, the, all the different entities are out there based off of how much tax levy there is. So yes, and the answer to your question is yes, our budget did increase and we are asking for an increase in our budget to substantiate those four employees that we're asking to increase to. I believe the difference in budget that was, that was sent was the allocation for the city of Colleen last year was about $575,000. This year it would be about $630,000 to provide all the appraisal services, tax rate calculations, and all the collection of all your taxes.
Thank you, sir. I don't think there's any more questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The council will be taking a 10-minute break. We're going to call this meeting back to order. Ooh, 9:09. We got a long way to go. Please take all conversation outside. The meeting has been called to order. Discuss items for regular city council meeting on June 13, 2023. Consent agenda. Counsel, you have two times to speak for five minutes. Madam Secretary.
MN 23011, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 9, 2023. MN 23012, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 16, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. MN 23013, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 16, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. RS 23091, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of fleet parts from Hile of Texas in an amount not to exceed $132,000. RS 23092, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of 56 computers, mobile data terminals for police vehicles fully equipped with emergency equipment through the Texas Department of Information Resources and the Texas Byboard for a total cost in the amount of $217,390.33.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Are there any questions? All right. Resolutions. Counsel, you have five minutes to speak, two times each. Madam Secretary.
RS 23080, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to the bond advisory committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Attorney Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Council directed a bond committee to be established to promote topics for a possible November election. This committee is to consist of nine members and with the mayor and each council member selecting one member, plus an additional member selected by council as a whole. We have most of these names. There's still a couple of spots that we need to, to get names for. And then also, so if those individual council members can get those names to, to the city so that next week the council can vote to make, make this appointment. Also would note, we do not have the name for the whole council selection. So if you have that name tonight, or we will, we'll need, we'll need that by next week so that you can make, so you can actually vote to appoint this committee.
No, ma'am, we don't have one. But I do know if it's okay with the council, a former employee, Ms. Leslie Henkel, that has well-versed, well-knowledge about bonds and everything, she has requested if the city ever needs her to serve on a committee, she will be willing. Yes, she's perfect. I agree. I agree. You too? We have three. We have four. Councilmember Boyd? So we have five. So would you reach out to her, please? Thank you. And would you call the names of councilmembers that need to give you a name?
Yes, I need, we need a name from Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Segarra.
Okay. So if you can reach out to Segarra, you can get your name to her. Okay, yes, sir. We know you, you're new on the team. Yes, sir. All right. Anything else, Attorney Clemens?
Nothing else on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public hearing will be held on June 13, 2023. Counsel, public hearing. You have five minutes to speak, two times each. Madam Secretary.
PH 23036, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by J. Perez LLC, Series B, Flume Number 23-02, to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use map, Flume, from a neighborhood commercial place type designation to an industrial place type designation for approximately 10.56 acres being part of the Clean Area Investment Corp. Industrial Track Lot Point Track D and part of the J.J. Roberts Survey Abstract Number 731. The property is locally addressed as 5200 East Veterans Memorial Boulevard, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Rebell.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, to the council and to the city attorney. Before you is a future amendment, future- Before you is a future amendment, future land use amendment map, map amendment for property located at 5200 East Veterans Memorial Boulevard. The request is to change the designation of the future land use from neighborhood commercial to industrial. The star on the map shows the approximate location. As we mentioned, changing from neighborhood commercial to industrial. If approved, this industrial, if approved, the industrial place type will provide for industrial uses, such as manufacturing and warehouse space. And the intent of the applicant after this future land use amendment would be to actually rezone property that's currently are, that's residential to manufacturing, to make it consistent with the surrounding zoning. And that's a map showing current, the current zoning in the area. As you can see, that square in the midst of that property is kind of sticking out as residential, and want to be able to change that to manufacturing. Connection to the comp plan, I will not read. Property looking south. View of the neighborhood property to the north and across Veterans Memorial Boulevard. Property to the west. Property to the east. And property to the south. All notifications have been met with the 400-foot boundary, no written responses to date. That shows the notification extent and boundaries. The council really will have two alternatives, disapprove the applicant's flume amendment or approve the applicant's flume amendment. And staff has recommended approval of the flume amendment that will allow for that subsequent request to rezone from residential to manufacturing. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case on May 1st, and also voted by, a vote of 5 to 0, to recommend approval of the applicant's request. Prepare to answer, any questions you may have?
Any questions? All right, Mr. Rebell, thank you. Stand by for your next item. Madam Secretary.
PH 23037, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Franklin Land Associates LLC on behalf of Whitest Investments LTD, case number Z23-02, to rezone approximately 1.098 acres out of the CT Berlin Survey Abstract Number 137, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District. The property is locally, is located on the east right-of-way of East Tremere Road and north of Andalusia Lane, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Rebell?
Yes, ma'am. This is a rezoning request, rezoned property that's located as designated on the slide from residential to B3. The star on the map shows the approximate location along East Tremere Road. The map shows the actual location of the rezoning request. The properties highlighted in blue were the properties that express opposition to the request. This shows the surrounding zoning. As you can see, as you've seen on the previous map, I'll go back, the red portion of the property, just in front of the property there, is already zoned B3, and the applicant is requesting to rezone the back portion that's cordon off in the blue to B3 as well. If approved, the applicant intends to develop a general retail store at the square footage listed on the slide. Property is within residential mixed flume, so it's consistent with the future land use Those are the comprehensive plan recommendations that are being furthered by this request. This map really shows the area that would be rezoned, but it also shows in orange, existing encore power right-of-way, about 100 feet. And then in the lavender purplish color is basically all floodplain-related property, where there would be no development within that area. And then the green represents where the development of that 10,640 square foot building, retail building would take place, outside the floodplain, outside the encore 100-foot right-of-way. There is a trail that's required. You know, we have our park land dedication ordinance that's in effect here, and so there's a trail that's required per the master, the open space master plan along the northern edge of the property. As a part of the park land dedication ordinance requirements, the property only does have to designate, dedicate property to the city for the trail. And so that is happening as well, approximately 1.3 acres would be a part of that dedication that would come later for the council's consideration. And this would allow for the future Greenway Trail associated with the Persa Heritage Hike and Bike Trail, but that is actually located on the other side of Tremere Creek. So this property is located on the south side of Tremere Creek. The trail is due to, is due to be, or the proposed trail is due to be on the north side of Tremere Creek. And so for that reason, this applicant will not be constructing the Greenway Trail on his side of the property, because that's not where it's to be constructed, but will be, as I've said previously, dedicated about 1.3 acres to the city, which is going to serve as a buffer to the creek, to the future trail and the proposed commercial development. This is a view of the subject property looking east. View of adjacent property to south, property to the west, fire station, property to the northeast. All notification requirements have been met. As a result of that, three written responses in opposition to this request, as we noted on the earlier map, we show the location of those properties. Notification boundary extends. Staff believes that this request to rezone should be approved. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. You have the alternatives that's listed there, disapprove, approve a more restrictive zone of the district, or approve applicant's request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on May 1st, and by a vote of 3 to 2, voted to recommend approval. Those two commissioners that oppose, as you can note on the slide, noted concerns associated with the loss of green space and with the proximity of proposed development to the floodplain.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Are there any questions for Mr. Rebell? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Items for discussion at workshop, council, you have five minutes to speak, two times each. Madam Secretary.
DS 23058, Planning and Zoning Commission update.
Good evening, Mr. Gu Kaesin.
Once again, is the quarterly update for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission meets the first and third Monday of every month, barring any holidays. The commission, excuse me, begins the workshop at 4 o'clock, followed by the regular meeting at 5 o'clock. The last quarterly update was March 7, 2023. Since that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission has conducted five meetings. Since March 7, 2023, the commission has revised one preliminary plant, one final plot, excuse me, residential plot, future land use map amendments 2 and 11, zoning requests, and three amendments to the code of ordinance. These are the preliminary plot, final plot, and residential plot that was approved, the city, Planning and Zoning Commission. The two flume changes that were approved by the P&amp;Z. And the 11 zoning requests approved by the P&amp;Z. Again, another continuation sheet. And the three amendments with Chapter 31 residential structures on a single lot and permitted use in a R3F, Chapter 31 short-term residential rentals, and Chapter 31 demolition by neglect. This is the comp plan implementation progress that we receive on every, at every briefing, on every P&amp;Z for any plot, flume, or any type of change, which is very helpful to the commissioners now, because it better lays out what the comp plan has in store and what the future of the area is supposed to look like. Planning and Zoning Commission will continue as normal to do its part to facilitate Colleen's vision of the future and look forward to working with the council, city staff, and all citizens. We have, at our last meeting, we finally received the video setup that we, that was approved by the council. And on behalf of the P&amp;Z, we appreciate that, because now it's going to allow to be a live feed. Eventually, it will be a live feed, just like this one is, so people can actually watch the meetings from home and everything. And I'm available for any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you, sir, for the update. There are no questions from the council. Thank you. Oh, stand by, sir, stand by. I apologize, Councilmember Board, I can see you now, your hand up. Sir, the floor is yours.
That's fine. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up, if I can, Commissioner, you guys, on the training that was pushed by the council, has most of the commissioners received that training?
Yes, we have, and we also have been offered additional online courses that relates to the mission of the P&amp;Z. I myself have taken, I think, three courses online to improve my, more my knowledge on what the P&amp;Z is for, and it's offered to everybody, all commissioners, if they wish to take it. But yeah, it is being, the training has been updated, and again, we're offered additional online courses to make our job a little bit easier with a better understanding and knowledge.
That's fair. And I'll also mention that it's good to hear that there's advancements and the technology has taken place, and that we'll also be able to see these meetings live, commonly, similar to a lot of neighborhoods, so, good to hear. Thank you for that information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for the update.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
DS 23059, discuss and consider scenic city certification program.
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. This is my first time before you.
Yes, it is, ma'am.
And I'm excited to talk to you about scenic, the scenic city certification program. If you should receive a survey after tonight's presentation, I hope you rate me five stars. So we'll get, we'll get right into it. On May 2nd, you brought to, you brought a motion of direction to discuss participation in the scenic city certification program from Scenic Texas. Scenic Texas supports and recognizes cities that implement high-quality scenic standards for public spaces, and they provide a proven tool for assessment, evaluation, and recognition of infrastructure standards. So that's about them. Some of the benefits to the cities are to provide impartial third-party evaluation of existing standards, to form a basis for continual review and analysis of development plans, to serve as a platform to educate citizens on the impact of local regulations, and to support economic development efforts. Oh, and to provide additional support for our comprehensive plans, that's important as well. Some of the evaluation criteria, so Scenic Texas primarily looks at a municipality's ordinances and programs that they have in place, and they're looking at that across 10 visual tenants. So we're looking at streetscape enhancement, parks, trails, and open space, lighting standards, design integrity, landscaping, sign control, litter and graffiti prohibition, utility and cable line programs, dumpster screening, and unique municipal features and special programs. That's like their miscellaneous category that you can put anything into. So this, at a minimum, a municipality must have three things. Must have the landscaping or tree planting program, have a system to issue on-premise sign permits, and must prohibit new billboards. So those three things have to be in place for you to be able to be certified. The cost for year one is $1,500 for that first year. For years two to five, it would be $750. If the city desires to rank up in year two to five, there's an additional $750 fee. So the ranks are recognized bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. So if you were to achieve recognized on the first round, you could pay another $750 the next year, and then rank up to something else. So it's a possibility. Most cities do it on a five-year plan, so they would pay the $1,500 only every five years. Alternatives, do not participate in the scenic city certification program, apply to participate in the scenic city certification program in 2023. The application deadline on their website shows June 15th, but the lady did tell me that she would accept them up to July 10th. Staff notes that we do not currently meet minimum requirements for certification, or apply to participate in the scenic city certification program following the adoption of a new unified development code that's just now in RFP process. Staff recommends to apply to participate in the scenic city certification program following the adoption of a new unified development code. Any questions?
Thank you. I have a question. So the three requirements that were stated, and you say we are not there yet.
So the one, the one that we don't currently meet is the prohibition of new billboards. We currently allow, allow new billboards to be placed in the city. So in order to meet minimum requirements, which could possibly get you to the recognize, the recognize category, you'd have to make an ordinance to prohibit new billboards. Where if you did that as part of the UDC, that could just be part of the UDC that gets implemented altogether.
Okay. And once we become a part of the program, can we get grants? What's the purpose of it?
The purpose, so the purpose is really, there's not really grants, there's not really added money. Some people would find it a draw to the city because you've achieved the certification, but it's, it's more for the third-party, the third-party overview of, did you, do you have well-written ordinances that are enforceable? So you would have peers, it's a peer review process that does that. And that's really the benefit to the city, is other, other cities, other peers are looking at our ordinances and seeing if we've got one.
Doing an assessment on us.
Yes, yes.
That's what it is, assessment on us. Okay. And that's just keeping that check and balance, keeping us honest, making us look better.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great. Thank you. Councilmember Board.
Yes, sir, you, you so loud.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you now.
Okay, very good. My understanding, and I'll push back on this a little bit, is that there is funding that can be made available with these standards in place in regards to landscape improvements. That would be my understanding.
Councilmember, Councilmember Board, you real loud, we getting feedback.
Yeah, I'll try to lower my voice and speak.
No, it's the volume, it's the volume.
I got you. Ready?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So I was just saying that I would push back a little bit, my understanding is that funding would be made, would likely be made available through grants, if I'm not mistaken, regarding landscaping improvements in particular with this program. That's, that's the first point. The second thing is, I did expect a little bit more information about this, more in detail, kind of like what was presented to me at the TML conference that I went to. I do think this would benefit the city in the future, that, my concern, but I would like to ask Mr. Rebell this, the billboards, is that an issue for some cities having a proliferation of billboards, if you will, or why might that be something that's proposed by an agency like this, or nonprofit?
I'm not familiar specifically with Texas, but I can say that sometimes a billboard can be an issue, if you have too many of them, if they're placed too closely together. Just, it just kind of deals with clutter along your roadway. But most certainly, as Matt said, that could be something that we consider and look at. I would also think that we would want to be concerned about making sure that we have stakeholders involved in that, all who would be affected by that change, if that's what we decided to do. Because I'm sure there would be some parties that would like to participate in that, that are conducting businesses associated with. that are conducting businesses associated with billboards.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for that. Now, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, more than anything. I think this is important for us to have some preliminary discussion on. I guess I do have one more question for Mr. Rebell. The Unified Development Code, how, where might that be on the conveyor belt to where we can eventually get to being certified by Scenic City in Texas, should we determine to do so?
Sure. So it has been funded. So the council has approved the funding for the Unified Development Code. And as Matt mentioned, it's actually in the process of being, developing a request for proposals. Basically, we'll send that request out to all potential parties that may be interested in assisting the city in developing the Unified Development Code. Once we've completed that process, we have somebody engaged that will have to come to council, you know, for approval. And then once that approval has been given, we would be able to move forward with the work of the development. We're believing that to complete that work, it's going to take probably very close to the same amount of time that it took to complete the comprehensive plan.
Which is about how long?
Anywhere between 15, 21 months.
Okay, about two years to get to that. Understood. Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, thank you for giving us an update. Once you get everything together, could you please bring it back before the council so they can continue the discussion if this, where they want to go forward?
So after the UDC, you were...
When everything is complete, because I think we're working on the ordinance, are we not? Did we complete that? Oh, 15, 20 months. Yeah. So I guess, yeah, that's a long time. But yeah, we all be around, huh? So, yes, sir. Woo! And we thank Councilmember Board. One thing I can say while you're standing up there, one thing I honestly say when council go to these different conferences, especially Councilmember Board, he always, and Councilwoman, Mayor Protem called. And there may be some more. I think Councilwoman Gonzalez, you had the downtown street name. That was good. Main Street. And Councilmember Alvarez, did you check in on anything? All the time. That's what I like to hear. So this council, the ones you see before you now, I know for a fact that they're always, and we know you knew, Councilmember Solomon, you, you, you got some things brewing. I told, I told the city attorney about them. They always come back with great ideas. And what I love about this council is they come back with ideas to benefit the whole city as a whole. And that's really important moving our city forward. And I thank you, Ben, your first presentation. You were quick, precise. And next time, when you come back in 12 months to two years, we will have more detail for Councilmember Board. And Councilmember Board, one more time, thank you for bringing this idea before the council. Thank you very much, sir. Madam Secretary.
DS 23-061. Discuss and consider setting a date for a tour of the Bellton Water Treatment Plant.
Thank you, ma'am. City Attorney Clemmons.
Thank you, Mayor. WCID has invited city council to tour the Bellton Water Treatment Plant. And so what we're looking for here, the preferred date from WCID would be Wednesday, June 28th, at 5:30 PM. There's some other options in July 10th, 12th, 13th. But what we're looking for here is direction from the council on whether you want to do this tour and what date you would like to do this, so we can get that scheduled.
Yes, ma'am, because you have to post it. And on the 28th, I would be in the meeting with Mr. Kegel. So if you can send out, I know 28th is one, and I've been there before. So if you can send out the 28th and other dates that is available, can we do a poll? Or do we have to make a decision now?
You don't have to make a decision now, but we, we don't, we don't have to make a decision now. But if you could, I think we were looking for direction, if we could get a consensus that everybody would be available.
Would everybody look at their calendar for the 28th? We got one. Because you're always ready. I like that. Councilmember Alvarez, too. Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilwoman Solomon. And Councilmember Board, Mayor Protem, is at 5:30 on the 28th?
5:30 is fine.
Yes, ma'am. The 28th is great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Secretary, the last item.
DS 23-060. Discuss pending litigation, Bell County versus City of Colleen, cause number 23DCB338257.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the City of Colleen on the sixth day of June 23rd at 9:39. Hold on, counsel. A, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. The city council will consult with the attorney regarding pending litigation related to Bell County versus the City of Colleen, cause number 23 Delta Charlie Victor 338257. The mayor now call a closed meeting, calls a closed meeting. Okay. It's great to be back in the chamber. Well, counsel, we wait on our city attorney. The council completed the closed meeting on June 6, 2023, at 10:03. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
So who did you get, Madam Secretary, with the motion?
I didn't.
Okay. So she didn't.
I'm trying to log back in.
Councilmember Alvarez made the motion to adjourn. Councilmember Gonzalez made the second. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.